Hi, welcome to our Bristol, Tennessee City Council called City Council meeting this Monday, April 20th. I'm Margaret Fire Robin. I currently serve as mayor and I call this meeting to order. And welcome everybody. We will first have our roll call, Tara Music, if you'll do our attendance.
Fire Robin?
Here.
King?
Here.
Powers?
Here.
Luttrell?
Here.
Turner?
Here.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sora, if you want to introduce the staff and guests who are present with us today, we'd appreciate it.
To be glad to you, Mayor. It's our pleasure to have with us several members of our Tennessee Department of Tourism staff, especially Commissioner Mark Azell, who will be making some opening comments, Assistant Commissioner for Rural and Tourism Outreach Melanie B. Combs, and East Tennessee Division Manager Dave Jones. Also with us is Chamber of Commerce President and CEO Beth Reinhardt. Hopefully joining us later will be Jamie Carden with McGill and Associates to talk about our trail system. From a staff standpoint, we have Danielle Smith, City Attorney, Tara Music, our city recorder. We also have Terry Napier, Director of Parks and Recreation, and John Luttrell, our Director of Community Relations onboard.
Thank you very much. And also I'll note that behind the scenes, we also have our IT department who are helping us putting this together. Really appreciate it. The first business we need to do every time is talk about the necessity for conducting electronic meeting. Attorney Danielle Smith, can you just briefly again tell us and then we'll all nod our heads and agree?
Yes, Mayor. Governor Lee issued Executive Order Number 16, which suspended the provisions of the Open Meetings Act to the extent that governing bodies needed to conduct their essential business via electronic means rather than in person. In order to do that, however, the governing body has to make a finding that it's necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans in light of the COVID-19 crisis that the meeting be conducted electronically. So at each meeting, you guys need to make that finding that it is necessary to protect the health, welfare, and public and safety of Tennesseans because of the COVID-19 crisis.
Okay, council, everybody on board?
Yes.
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 Thank you very much. So first thing on our agenda is a presentation and talking about tourism. Mr. Sora, do you want to kick it off or make introductions or start with Beth?
I think I'll give this to Commissioner Azell. I know he has on a fairly short timeline this morning and may be rejoining us later in the presentation, but this is our annual conversation with the Chamber, Discover Bristol and the Convention and Visitors Bureau. I know Beth wanted to do something a little bit different this year in bringing in the State Department of Tourism officials to just discuss with City Council the importance of tourism and the economic impact it has on our community.
Commissioner Azell?
All right. Thank you all. And I know that I've gotten to spend some time either in Bristol or here in Nashville with some of the Bristol folks. Beth, I appreciate the times that we've gotten to be together. Wanted to just kind of give you a quick background. First of all, I joined the Lee administration from a background in business. So I'm a milkman by trade. Our family, we had a family business with about $100 million in sales in milk and ice cream and did that for, I was in that career with Dean Foods later, for about 40 years. And like Governor Lee, we came in with a business-like approach. And honestly, if you'd have said, Mark, you know, I want to talk about tourism, I'd have said, well, tourism, that's nice. I'm glad we have some tourism. But what happened over the upcoming weeks and months as I took this position for Governor Lee is I'm a big data guy. And when I was running multiple multimillion-dollar companies, you had to have a lot of data. You had to make business decisions off of that information. And you took the facts and it helped drive, you know, the reasons why you made decisions. And I started getting into the information about tourism and the unbelievable dollars that it brought in to the communities. And so I would find myself literally calling and saying, you know how many dollars are generated on the following activities for the state of Tennessee? And to, really and truthfully, I had a several-month conversion from one of those people who would have said, you know, tourism is important, you know, pretty important, and we need to make sure we have some funding for it, to realizing how it is for Tennessee and especially for communities like Bristol. When you've got some tourism assets like you do that can drive your hotel motel, resources can drive your portion of the sales tax, or can drive our portion of the sales tax. It was a kind of a conversion. So we're going to be sending you, I think Melanie is going to handle this later, Assistant Commissioner Beecham, a brochure we put together that's got some facts. And I would not call it propaganda. I would call it facts. And I would encourage you to look at it because what the reality is that last year, tourism, sales tax dollars for the state, we're basically a 7% dividend recipient from all the activities that happen in tourism and leisure and hospitality. That 7% last year increased. And I'll tell you, I started out with the reports from US Travel. And again, being a business guy, I was skeptical. What kind of information are we going to get from a group called US Travel? I bet it's going to be really positive about tourism. And so we wanted to try to find out, how do we get, make sure we got the best source? Is tourism really bringing dollars in? So we went to, for the state of Tennessee, there's one source, the Department of Revenue. They're the guys that count every bit of the money, real dollars, in the armored trucks when they're pulling it in to receive that money. And so we went to them and we said, it looks like the US Travel is saying we're up 6% this year. Could you look and see, because we want to know, are you seeing the tax dollars? And they came back and said, well, it's not 6, it's actually 6.4%. And I said, and it looks like it's a whole lot of new dollars coming into the state. And they said, yes. And we calculated, and the new dollars that we brought in were more than 100 million new dollars into the state. And I said, now, wait a minute, you're talking about hospitality, that's hotels, restaurants, and tourist attractions. Over 100 million new dollars. So what that means is if we're getting 7 and the local communities are getting somewhere in that 2-point-something, that those are real dollars coming in. And with so much of it coming through hotel motel taxes, there are more dollars. And so what I wanted to do is to get on the phone, because what we did with the governor, this is all pre-COVID-19, we got on the phone with the governor and said, you know, when I look at our budget, what we've been doing, we haven't been spending proportionate dollars to that growth in hotel motel tax. Those budgets have been increasing dramatically. And the state has kept some relatively flat pieces. Fortunately, we've had a number of cities and communities who turned in all of their dollars to tourism for the hotel motel tax, and they've increased their tourism budgets. Because the hotel motel, as it went up, the tourist budget went up. When you look at the performance of those communities in tax dollars, they're up more than those who did not. And we've got fortunately, one that's in East Tennessee, Sevier County, that has set up that way. And I'm not trying to recommend that you do that. I'm just saying, the mindset of viewing tourism as a regulatory agency, that we just need to make sure, you know, we're at least doing what we did last year, is not how you would fund a growth part of your company or of your organization. ECD and tourism are the only two parts of your government that are going to be having the ability to grow and bring revenue. And that's what we said to the governor. And so our budget, again, pre-COVID-19, was literally going to double in our discretionary advertising because we realized we got to be spending more. Got to be spending more. Why? Because if we spend more, we'll get more people, and those people will spend money in our hotels, and we'll get to collect the sales tax, and then use that sales tax to fund the other things of government. And that's kind of our message today and the number of jobs that the hospitality industry is doing. And unfortunately, when COVID-19 hit, we've clearly seen the role that hospitality was playing because the majority of those 200,000 new, 250,000 people who've now joined the unemployment rolls are coming out of that leisure and hospitality because they had to shut down. And as you know, I'm in a new responsibility for right now as Director of the Economic Recovery Group. And you're going to start seeing soon announcements about a careful and thoughtful, safe approach that we are having to how we're going to open back portions of our economy for the state of Tennessee. And you'll see some announcements that will take place this week. So I just wanted to get on the phone and talk about that, and then to talk about one example of a program that we've done that is going to be another reason why I believe Bristol has got to be investing in tourism, even when a budget gets tight. Because what we were able to do when we partnered with the Ken Burns Country Music Program, we knew it was going to be huge. We just didn't realize exactly how big. So 34 million viewers watched that show, and Bristol, really Bristol and Nashville are the two most highlighted cities in the entire 16 hours. And what we're excited about is Ken Burns is one of the most trusted sources for historical information of anybody in the United States. And what we've seen is not only do they watch his show, but then they want to go and visit the places that he's talked about in the show. And so now we know that over 40 million people have seen his show, his 16-hour show, and we've already generated over $4 billion impressions where they talk about the state of Tennessee and Ken Burns highlighting artists or places in Tennessee that people could go and visit. So just want to really tell you that we believe the Ken Burns effect, once travel gets restored, and we hope versions of travel get restored sooner than later, Bristol, Tennessee is going to see the Ken Burns effect for several years. And making sure that you are investing in is our hotel community. Are we promoting and marketing to make sure we get that visitor to come and to spend money in our town is really going to be a key piece. So those are the highlights of what I wanted to communicate. COVID-19 has obviously put us back onto where our budgets were not, no initiatives actually were approved. And we've had to step back as we deal with that crisis. But I hope that you can look at this document. If you're not spending more money in the one thing that's got the ability to give you more money, to do other things with your operation, that's what I'm asking you to be considering. And it's not because I'm a tourism biased person, because I hadn't been in tourism before this past year. I'm a business guy. And the data says, spend more money to make more money. And hopefully, some of this information might change your mind a little bit because I needed to have my mind changed. Because tourism can literally be life-changing in job creation and in bringing in dollars for your budget.
Thank you.
Melanie, I can jump to a phone and be getting in a car. I'm sorry, my other job is taking me to be at an 8:30. But I do really appreciate what you have. Right now, the Ken Burns effect, what we believe when travelers are able to reengage, those Ken Burns people are going to have places like Bristol, Tennessee on your map. We're saying, please be ready, spend the money, make sure they understand how to get there, what to do when they get there. I think it'll pay serious dividends.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day, full of meetings.
Thank you. I'll be back on the phone in just a moment.
Okay. So Melanie or Dave, do y'all want to add anything before we ask for questions and comments? And Beth can also jump in there too?
I don't know who's going to go first, but yeah, I think what Commissioner said is, you know, just pre-COVID-19, it's just really amazing the effects that tourism has on communities. And the reduction in taxes for the households as a result of the money that comes in. Sullivan County as a whole is ranked number seven in the state on tourism expenditures in the state. And so that's big out of 95 counties. We also offer a marketing grant programs, which we do great partnership with Beth and Bristol, which is a one-to-one match on marketing dollars. And for a long time, they've taken advantage of that. I think this year, the award was $35,000 to match your $35,000 to extend your marketing message, which helps us too. You know, as long as we can partner and leverage those dollars back and forth, and it just helps the reach for the entire state, but for Bristol. So that's a program that we've had in place for some time. And it really allows for planning with a budget and just looking at how we can do more together. And so Bristol's been a great partner to us, and we work very closely with the CVB. Dave, do you have anything in particular that you want to cover that the Commissioner?
I just want to, I want to be respectful of the time that they have allowed for us. I know we got started a little bit late, and certainly we can answer, try to answer some questions. Or if Commissioner gets back on, you may want to ask those questions to him. So we'll turn that back to you.
All right. Beth, did you want to add anything at this point?
I just want to say first and foremost that I'm very appreciative of the opportunity to share information and to answer questions that you all have. That's been a great working relationship, and we value that greatly. I want to say a huge thank you to Commissioner Azell and to Melanie and Dave for taking the time to be on the call this morning and to field any questions that come up. I'm certain you all will have some. And while we have their incredible brain trust back here behind us, it'd be a good time to ask away. And I'm happy to jump in when appropriate.
Okay, thank you. So questions? And if there's something that we need to wait for Commissioner Azell, we can do that? Questions from council?
Yeah, I have one. I mean, obviously, there's going to be a shortfall this year. Do you have any projections of the highs or lows of what that percentage may look like this year?
I think it's really too early to tell. We certainly know that March and April were very low for hospitality. The hospitality and service industry is taking, you know, a big hit, but it's really hard to tell at this point. It kind of depends on how long this is going to go. We know that the budget and the Commissioner may be able to speak more into this, but the budget, the legislature did somewhat of a bare-bones budget just to get it passed so that we can move forward because they were still in session when all of this started. And we're hoping they'll reconvene to discuss what the budget looks like in the future. But we certainly know that there's been a loss for March and April. And it's just really too hard to tell what the percentages are going to look like, I think, right now. Trying to get him back on.
So pretty much you guys are going to be very conservative going forward?
Yeah, I think we're going to have to be, especially until we know what this is going to look like. There's going to be a pent-up demand, we think, in terms of travel. Dave's been on a lot of webinars and has been kind of paying attention to the trends. But certainly, I think, at least in the beginning, we're going to have to be conservative, just not knowing what the impact has been so far.
Thank you.
And I will say that we have pulled back on our, on our marketing at this time. And that's pretty much what everybody's suggesting, to hold that gunpowder until it's time to release it and go back to battle for that visitor. But it's kind of on a hold right now. And we're saving it until we know people are ready to travel.
If I could, Mayor, I would also respond that we have followed those industry guidelines as well. We have suspended some of our campaigns that were actively and aggressively pursuing tourists to travel here because that's not the right thing to do, and it goes against the guidance that we're all hearing. So we have held those in suspended modes as of right now to be able to, again, apply that gunpowder when needed appropriately. I do have, after we get to that point, I can show you, I have the occupancy, ADR, and RevPAR graphs that go through March. That's the latest data that we have for both Bristol. So I can show that when the time's appropriate to show you that it is starting to drop off.
Question from State Tourism. We, as you know, have a major festival. And are y'all in a position where you know what any best practices are or provide guidance? If not yet, looking soon to know, how do we need to go forward with reinventing or looking at that coming up in September schedule right now? Do y'all have, do y'all have guidance or ideas on how to reinvent?
Well, we know, we think we're going to hear more, as Commissioner said, moving forward, just even as early as this week or next, on kind of how we start to reopen. What we do think is that it's just going to look different. Travel is going to look different in general. And as far as festivals and events, we're not sure how that's going to, how that's going to look, particularly the ones that are more compact in terms of people. We've seen events being canceled, hopeful that September is far enough out, but we just simply don't know right now. And that is probably the biggest question that we get because so many of our communities' festivals are big for them, and that is a huge draw, and particularly in the summer and in the fall. And so this has been a big question that we've gotten. I think, well, we are watching, we're watching for trends. There are so many different organizations that are kind of giving guidance and a lot of information out there. As I mentioned, Dave's following that. But we just don't have a good answer on making those plans or at what point do you make changes. Dave, do you have anything to add on that?
Well, we know that the number one thing that people, our consumers are concerned about is safety. So the attractions and events that can show safety are going to be the ones that will successfully come back earlier than later. So that's kind of the guideline right now. So we want all of our businesses to be thinking about, okay, what's the next steps that we can do when we open up to illustrate that we have safe guidelines? So that would, that's what all business needs to be focused on right now. Commissioner's having a hard time getting in, so he will not be on, back on. He apologized for that, Mayor. But he's got his next meeting coming up, and we're certainly happy to try to answer any questions.
That's understandable. It just means y'all are on the hot seat. Okay, other questions from council?
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I just add a couple of things in there? So looking at the research and watching the trends, it looks like that once there is the opening of the gates, so to speak, that people will feel safe to start traveling again, and that the guidance indicates it's okay to do that. A lot of the research shows that people are not going to be first and foremost getting on airplanes or on cruise ships. They're going to be going and traveling to places that they can drive to in an easy manner. And that safe word, again, we keep hearing that people are very stuck to going to places that in their minds are deemed to save and, I guess, appropriate during this time. So we fit a lot of the criteria, especially if you look at our target markets for where our travelers' demographics show they're coming from and what they're coming for. I think it really positions us to be in a really good place geographically and other for that boom once it hits. So we've taken the stance of, our campaign has been, we're here waiting for you, and not actively, again, pursuing travelers, but letting people know, here are the things you can still read about and learn about for Bristol. Once you make that decision to start traveling again, and we hope that you choose us. So we're following a lot of the industry guidelines and the research to be ready when that time comes.
Thank you.
That's a great point, Beth, because Tennessee is positioned very well, being a drive market. And, you know, we may see a shift in some of the advertising and marketing that we do as we move forward because we have done more, you know, we do have our contiguous states, but also have done markets further out. But we know that Tennessee, being a drive market, is going to be a good choice for a lot of people. And they're going to want to travel. They're going to want to get out. We all want to get out. And so I think we are positioned well, and you all specifically, and where you are in the state. So, great point.
Additional questions?
I have a question. I had asked, Beth, have you, I don't know if you've already seen it, maybe I just missed it, but a detailed budget of the Discover Bristol organization. Have we received that yet?
I can share that with you right now if you'd like, and I can also forward that to you. Would you like me to share it on the screen?
No, you'll just forward it to us so that we'll have it for our ongoing discussions. And if you would forward this year's and last year's so that we've got, you know, some comparison data. I know that Chad had asked about a data-driven program. And I know when we met with Virginia, you had a lot of specific detail that you shared. Are you going to be sharing that with us today about Tennessee?
So the impact, and I've got the presentation pulled up here. The impact numbers that I shared in the handout and in the Virginia Council meeting was, you know, it was across that state line. So a lot of the data that we have, and I have those too, I can pull up. So the occupancy trends, what we benchmark every month, the ADR, the RevPAR, those are specific to the Bristol hotels. We pay Smith Travel for that very customized report that we get so that it's not lumped in with a greater county number or others. So those numbers that I, and I have those, I can share if you'd like to see where they are through March. That is specific to the Bristol hotels. Other than that, a lot of the other economic impact numbers that I shared in that, they are Sullivan County-wide. They're not specific to Bristol, Tennessee, because that's how the numbers are sent in and aggregated. And I was speaking with Dave Jones. I don't know that we can get the Bristol numbers pulled out for, and if Melanie and Dave could reply to that, whether or not we can get that very specific Bristol-only number.
Well, and additionally, let me go ahead while I'm asking my questions. When you presented to Virginia, you did a lot of discussion about things that were, that seemed to be Virginia-centric. Do you have, and there wasn't as much Tennessee-centric, is my point. And we had that conversation in that when you presented to us, we would see more Tennessee-centric marketing. I know that we're marketing all of Bristol, but what marketing is being targeted in Tennessee, through Tennessee, just as it was in Virginia, through Virginia?
So to answer that, I know we talked about, if I'm remembering correctly, what you're referencing. So the, for example, the Crush Friday Grant that we received from Virginia Tourism. So the grant, the Market Leveraging Grant that we have, that we're currently in process with fulfilling right now is the $35,000 one-to-one match grant that Melanie referenced earlier. So those have been extended because we mentioned earlier that we had the ability, Tennessee Tourism gave us the option to extend that if we requested because of having to suspend some of our marketing dollars to the appropriate time rather than just spend them to meet the grant. We're very grateful, by the way, for that, from you all extending that for us because otherwise, you're spending money that, just trying because otherwise you're spending money that, just trying to meet a requirement that's not creating the impact that you're trying to create. Um, so that's right now is the one that we have currently underway with them. And you've given us until 2021, I believe, on that?
Yes, that's correct. I mean, we had to pause our advertising. So we certainly knew that there were partners either with events or marketing messages that they were putting on hold and, and that's what they should be doing. So we did, we extended that for a year, um, to allow if someone had a spring campaign that they had to pause to give them opportunity to run that spring campaign with those marketing dollars next year. So there is a one-year extension and, and that seems to have been helpful for a lot of our partners who, who count on that for spring campaigns.
Right. And then to Melanie and Dave, um, Mr. Sora, how much do we allocate, um, we, in our occupancy tax, how much did we collect last year in our occupancy tax?
We saw a, uh, a downturn in our occupancy tax last year. Typically, we'd been in the $425,000 range. Last year, uh, or for fiscal 2019, we were down to $385,000. Uh, much as, has been, has been, uh, discussed here. We're not sure where this is going to take us, but, uh, for the rest of the year, we will receive, um, our lodging tax for March. Uh, it's supposed to be post-March today. So I do think within, uh, probably by Wednesday or Thursday, we'll have a better sense of at least where, uh, the March occupancy tax landed this year. But we're estimating, uh, a substantial hit. Uh, and I think we're going to be closer to the $300,000, uh, range to finish fiscal 20. But it, but again, a lot of that's unknown.
Thank you so much. And having said that, I just wanted to, to make the point that, um, we, uh, functioning at $385,000, I just want to be sure that the state understands that we are very enthusiastic about tourism, being the birthplace of country music and, uh, the fastest half-mile with our, uh, uh, racing here at, at, uh, uh, the, uh, Bristol Motorsports, BMS. And, uh, last year, we allocated right at $260,000 for our total tourism incentive dollars. Thirty, uh, let me get this straight, 175 went to the CBB, I believe. We did, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Sora, we did 50,000 to Believe in Bristol? Is that correct?
Uh, you're, are you talking about for this, for our current fiscal year, what we have for fiscal 20? Okay, it was 170,000 for the CBB in our current fiscal year. Uh, 30,000, uh, to, uh, Birthplace of Country Music and 50,000 to Believe in Bristol.
So, so we, we have allocated what we believe about 250,000 of the 375. And when you were talking about, or when the commissioner was talking about Ken Burns, you're absolutely right. We felt very strongly that it really needed to be put out there. I know the BCM invested 75,000, uh, in marketing the Ken Burns and have had, uh, tens of thousands, if not hundreds, hundreds of thousands of impressions, probably closer. Dave, you probably know more about this than I do. And that the, uh, CBB, uh, invested in that as well with $600 to the website platform. So we are invested. We value, uh, tourism here in the, uh, state of Tennessee. I grew up in Nashville, so I know what tourism means there. But Bristol has made an overwhelming investment, given the resources that we've had. And, and I look forward to our continuing with, uh, supporting tourism. So thank you both for, for all of your help. And Beth, thank you for all that you do too.
But thank you, Councilwoman Powers. And if, if I could just, um, note, in looking at the lodging taxes and the decline that, um, that's being referenced, when you, and I looked at the, uh, collections, the greatest drop that came in the collections, um, came from the, the camping, the, uh, the camp lodging taxes. So I think we know that that decline is really what impacted it, uh, to the greatest extent in looking at that. And we know that why that is, that industry has had some challenges for sure. And, um, and we did, we do fully support the Ken Burns initiative. And even though, um, the $600 you referenced on the landing page that we helped fund, all of our other marketing efforts that we invest in also go directly toward the Ken Burns and toward other things because that, that's where our, our marketing strategy is directed at our, at our assets, at Birthplace of Country Music, um, at Bristol Motor Speedway and our outdoor assets in our downtown. So, um, you know, the $600 is just a scratch of the surface. That's where all of our dollars are being targeted, targeted or specifically at those, and especially at the Ken Burns. I mean, we recognize and greatly appreciate the, appreciate the state's investment in that. That is a huge win for us and we can't be grateful enough for that.
So all of that information that you just talked about, I'll, we'll look forward to seeing that in the data that you give us, is the marketing plan as to how that, that would be supporting documentation that, that we probably have not seen just yet. That would be very helpful, um, to, to see that there has been this investment of marketing dollars in the Ken Burns situation as well as Bristol Motor Speedway. We just, we need a more comprehensive look at that as, as one of the largest stakeholders in Discover Bristol. You know, we're data-driven too. And, um, you know, the conversation has been had that for us to be optimally supportive, we need the data and we need the information to do that. And so I'll look forward, I'm sure all of council will look forward to receiving all of this information. Thank you.
Absolutely. If I could, and sorry, not to belabor the point, but, um, so the marketing strategy, we had a 2019 marketing strategy that Courtney prepared when she was here and was fulfilled with the targeted marketing efforts that, uh, transpired through 2019. So we take our marketing strategy and then we write the market leveraging grant to both Virginia and Tennessee Tourism to make sure that we fulfill what that strategy goal is and what we've been doing over that course. Uh, we've been working with, uh, former Commissioner Kevin Triplet on this year's strategy. So taking what we are already doing and fulfilling with our grant requirements and layering that to even a more targeted over the next, um, eight to 12 months and how that looks with those dollars. And also, um, so we have, as part of our Discover Bristol Board, we have a marketing committee as a part of that board who are experts and, you know, they're very seasoned experts in the marketing arena and they come together with us and they help us define what's the most appropriate use of those and most effective use of those dollars. So we rely greatly on that, uh, partner, um, effort of folks sitting around the table and deciding where are these dollars best spent. And those, as you know, we've talked about, um, you don't lay all your cards out on the table for the world to see. Those are, uh, even though we are a region and we all work together, there is a competitive side to how you do your marketing efforts and happy to share any of that with you all. And, and we'll talk about that in Discover meeting as well. And appreciately that you get on that and serve, um, in addition to Bill. And I know Terry Napier's on the call. Malon, you're on that. I appreciate your all's input and support in that manner.
Thank you. Other questions or council comments? Anything else from Dave, Melanie to add?
I just want to add, uh, again, a thank you. Uh, we also have, uh, had great success in working with, uh, with Bristol as it relates to, uh, PR missions, uh, bringing journalists into the area. Uh, the Convention Center CBB Chamber's always been very supportive of, of that initiative. And I think we're going to, uh, be looking forward to, uh, a lot of outdoor activity, uh, coming back into the area real soon. Uh, and we, we really want to hear from you so that we, uh, can know how to respond and know how to assist because, uh, it's Bristol baby, right?
Got it. So, um, yeah, if y'all haven't seen our It's Bristol Baby board book for toddlers, we need to get one to you. So we'll get Beth to send that to you. So.
Absolutely.
Um, anyway, all right. If there aren't any further questions, we will thank y'all profusely and thank Commissioner Zell for spending a few minutes with us. Um, and y'all did great with, uh, answering questions. Um, so, and if we have further ones, oh, look at that. Woo-hoo! Looks good. We all need to work on those backgrounds for, for us.
Mayor?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank y'all very, very much.
Thanks for having us.
Thank y'all.
I do have, if you're interested in seeing, uh, the updated occupancy, ADR and RevPAR graphs, I'm, I'm happy to share those quickly if you want to see them. Um, it's up to you or I can share them otherwise, but, uh, we do have that data through March. It takes about a good month or so, um, post, uh, collection to get that, but I do have it through March.
We'll take a quick look at that and, uh, just in case we have any questions.
Let's see, give me one quick second and I will get it pulled up here.
Hey Beth, I have a question on another, um, something else. I saw your press conference on Friday.
Yes.
On the Region Ahead. And I was just curious of, uh, I've already had one question on that. Of who is on the, who, who is this, the committee that is putting that together? And who is making the decisions? If somebody's going to, you know, is giving to it, the question was asked, well, who's, who's making the decisions? Is there, is it made up of people from? Some from Bristol, some from all over of all the counties that are represented? Or who, who, who's actually doing that?
That's a great question. I appreciate that you brought that up. Excuse me. So the, the concept actually started, uh, with one gentleman, Andy Dietrich at Champion Chevrolet. And Andy just, um, thought, you know, how can we help these local businesses, um, in a manner possible? And, and he put, uh, $5,000 of money into the pot to start with. And we spent about two weeks, it was, um, the three chambers of commerce, networks and net rep, uh, Neta were just in conversation. And then, uh, they brought Tony Tredway in from Creative Energy, all of the media. Then we started pulling in the leaders from Southwest Virginia. You've got Green County Chamber, uh, Unicoy, Elizabethan. So it grew into this large group of chambers and tourism folks and, uh, then kept layering it in with economic development folks, um, just to bring them into the concept of what this was going to do. And, um, it is a fundraiser, as you've seen, um, that the media has fully embraced and are pushing out there. There are PSAs that have been done. There are testimonials from local businesses from Green to Mossheim is really kind of the, the footprint. And so people can go onto that button on the Region Ahead website and donate. There is an allocations committee, um, of about, I think there's 11, we, either 11 or 13. And we went back and forth. Um, I think it's 11. And they did it so that it could be agile enough to make a decision and get the money up as quickly as possible to local businesses. They kept it fairly, uh, manageable. So 11, I think, is a good number. And it's a represent, it's representative people from Southwest Virginia and Northeast Tennessee. They don't really want those names out there because they don't want to put undue, uh, pressure on people who are just trying to do a, a volunteer good thing and make the decisions. But it is fully represented, excuse me, fully represented. And it, it has, you know, bankers, it has CPAs, it has business people, it has chambers on it. Um, and just to make sure that it's fairly represented, does that answer your question without saying who the names are of those people?
Right. So they're not, so those are going to remain anonymous of who's making the decisions?
Absolutely. And you can understand why. I mean, you don't want, if someone gets money and another one doesn't for, uh, and there's a clear guideline on, on how you qualify and what other funds you receive. So there are very clear criteria and guidelines to, um, to be considered for funding. And, um, so you, you don't want someone, if you were on that committee and something to your buddies didn't get it, you certainly wouldn't want them upset with you. And we're just trying to protect those who are volunteering to do it.
Will they be releasing who receives the, the funding, the businesses that receives the funding?
I don't know the answer to that specifically, but I'll get that answer for you. That's a great question. We haven't had anyone ask that yet. Like, will there be, um, a list of folks who receive it? I don't know the answer to that, but I will get it for you.
Okay, great.
Do you have approximately, how many dollars has come in versus going out yet, Beth?
No, you know, it just kicked off on Friday. Um, and within a couple hours, I think it was about $4,000 raised, just within a couple of hours. Uh, we have a call meeting, um, at noon today where we're going to get an update on how much money has been received. I know there's been a ton of grants come in because people have asked me questions. Um, other chambers that we engage with have said, hey, this person needs to send this. Who do they send it to? They couldn't get it to upload. If there's been a little tweak here or there, um, or somebody didn't know to add something, I'm hearing about it that way. So if that's an indication of folks applying, I think there's quite a few that we'll see, um, applying for assistance, which is what we, why this started and came about. Um, we hope, we, we don't know if it's $10,000 or $100,000. You just don't know until, um, you get into it. So I'm really excited and anxious to hear at noon what that number looks like.
Thank you.
Great. Um.
Let me pull that up here.
And while she's pulling that up, United Way had $20,000 to, um, um, in a similar type program. And they had about $58,000 in requests for funds. So, um, and they went ahead and dispersed that 20,000 with, um, uh, getting more money in to do some more later. Okay.
Let's see if I'm getting this right. I'm not sure, um, did that one show up or is it?
Yep.
Oh, okay. So I think, are you looking at the ADR? Sorry, it doesn't show on my side here. Um, you're looking at the average daily rate?
Right, right.
So as you can see, we started out the year strong, um, stronger than we have in the past five years. And then it took, uh, as of March, a pretty good, um, well, I say pretty good, but it's significant if you look at the, the trends over the past few years. So, um, that's what we're unfortunately, um, going to be seeing. And again, to the, the folks from the Tennessee Tourism Office, we just don't know what that, um, will look like. At the time, it's really hard to project that because we don't have an end date on when, um, opportunities will open back up again for people to travel. So that one is, um, just an unknown. And, and just like for you all, it's same with our budget here at the chamber. You just don't know what things will, um, shake out. So this is the occupancy. If you can see that, did that come up?
Uh, it's still ADR.
Okay. Let me go back here, uh, close that one. Okay. All right. Let me go back to, um, sorry, this is easier said than done some days. So there's occupancy. And go back to sharing screen again. Now, can you see that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Um, so again, started out the year strong, um, actually, um, slightly better than, uh, any of the years. A little slightly better than 2019. And then quickly started, started to see the decline on that one as well. Um, you know, we have made phone calls to every hotel here and had some, some pretty, um, emotional conversations with some of those folks on just the challenges that we know they're facing. And, um, our tourism industry has been hit probably, hospitality folks have been hit the hardest. And we've been, uh, working night and day around the clock to try to make sure that we can help them in any way possible, um, through pushing out every campaign we can. We did the Bristol Stands together. Uh, we worked on the Region Ahead process. You know, they, we've tried to been, be creative and innovative with what are some opportunities for, uh, putting appropriate folks in hotel rooms and negotiating rates on that. So it is certainly a challenging, uh, time for those folks. We have, um, I will tell you that last week, um, we're about two, almost, maybe almost two weeks into this now. And it's actually one of those, uh, really feel-good stories in my opinion, but it, it gives me hope that we're all in this together and that we all are supporting one another. But it, it gives me hope that we're all in this together and that we all are supporting one another. Electromechanical, Russell Leonard had looked at maintaining, keeping his shifts running full speed ahead. And in order to do that and to make it a safe environment for his folks coming and going, he made the decision that he was going to feed all of his employees who were working the lines and had a lunch break. So he made the decision to invest in local restaurant owners to cater the food every day for those, all of those facilities that they have. And we have managed that entire process for them firsthand and worked with many of the restaurants in the community. And they're continuing that until there is a known break for how they, how they'll, how we'll all get back to a new normal, I guess. And, and so they're investing in a community by also investing in their employees. And those are the things that I will tell you make or break it sometimes for these restaurants. We had people almost in tears saying, you know, this, this made my decision for whether or not we stay open another week. So just very hopeful and inspiring to know that our own community is, is looking out for one another and doing everything we can to help each other. And, and that's just a, a sign of who we are.
We need good stories. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Anybody have anything else? I think we want to keep on talking about our assets with, that are for us and for tourism. And moving to talk about our engineering report for Beaver Creek Trail. And I'll just, I've said it before, but a long time ago, visiting Chattanooga, when they were on their, early in their journey, they talked about developing their community where their people there like to live, work and play. And therefore other people would want to come and experience that as well. So I think when we do good things that we enjoy and that are good for us, that that also attracts other people to, to be here too. So Mr. Sora, you want to open it up? Can, did Mr. Sora hear me? Can y'all hear me? Oh, you can't hear me.
I can hear you, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I can hear you.
Uh, Bill's having trouble. So, because we can't hear Bill. We don't know what's going on. So we'll let Terry, Terry. Yeah, we'll let Terry start us off.
Okay. Well, so, so sure, why are we, we entered a contract with McGill and Associates to do a preliminary engineering study and report for the Beaver Creek South, as we're calling it, Greenway Project. And with us today is, is Jamie Carden from the, from the Knoxville office. And he and his staff, Boom, Hillibrand and others have put together what, what I think is an outstanding plan. I've spent some time on the ground with him, some of the pictures you'll see. Unfortunately, you see my not-so-good side. But, but anyway, Jamie, if you want to take it from here, he's got a little presentation and be around.
All right. Thank you, Terry. I appreciate y'all letting me in this morning, virtually. Let me see, I've got two things I'm going to try to show you. So I've got three monitors here, so I'm going to make sure I get you in the right place. I'll give you a overall, you, I guess, I guess, Terry, they got the packet, the, the presentations?
Right.
Okay.
We got it digitally.
Okay, that's fine. I'm going to show.
We got the whole packet prior to that.
And that, that'll help me to know. Okay, good thing.
Yep.
All right. Let me show you, this is probably, engineers are good for some things and some things we like to, people are visual and some people are not. Can you see that? Let's see here. Right. I'm going to show you a different, what you don't have yet. Can you see?
Yep.
You see a Google Earth picture?
Yep, with bright green trail.
That one, I thought I'd just show you, we'll go through the presentation that you did. This was just more of a picture. Again, this is your overall of what we're talking about. You can see up to the far upper end up here, it's where you're starting at Rooster Front Park, which is near Lowe's and that area. And you can see, I kind of marked through, we did that, ending down here at Bristol Bay. And right, so that's what this, the presentation's about. This was just more visual, so you could kind of see, you know, where things are. So I'm not going to really, we can bring this back up later if we need to, just for, it's much more clear than the report that we've got for presentation. But this will kind of help you to see if we need to, to talk about, if you've got a specific. So let me flip off of this one if I can and get to the presentation side of it. There we go, stop, share. All right. Let me swap back over to this one. All right. You should be seeing the, the presentation up for the material that you got.
Yep.
All right. Let me maximize this for everybody. All right. All right. I guess everybody can see that, I hope.
Yep.
All right. Again, I'm Jamie. I run the Knoxville office, if you will. Uh, I live off 81 and from Carter County originally, so I pretty much know a lot of these places we're talking about. So it's a kind of hometown, so that makes it good for both of us. They're my contact info there again, and Terry can pass up around an email or however, if you need to at the end. Again, we're, we're happy to be able to help you guys out on this. We think it's a good project. We've got a lot of landscape folks in our company that help work on these when we get to the point where it's, you're hopefully constructing things. And so we've laid this thing out in about nine different sections. It's going to go from, like I said, up near the Lowe's area, all the way down to the Bristol Track, going across 19E there several, several times. This is a, again, that's why I showed the other, as nice as the other look. This one's how engineers unfortunately have to do some things. It's, it's not as pretty and clean. Again, construction, of course, things are different. But this is how we've got it broken up, just an overall scale. And then what we'll do is, and then if, if you have, I'll show you the screen first. We've got this pretty snazzy little part of our presentation. If, if there's a specific section that we go to that you say, hey, I need to ask something about that. And you'll make a note of it because we've got this slide, and instead of going through all the slides in every room, we can't, all the slides will come back to this screen every single time when we're done talking. So if we get through number one, it'll flip back to number two. So if you've got something that's, hits home, just let me know. We can flip back to it pretty simply. So, so we're going to go to section number one, which is where we're quote, starting, if you will. Again, these are, it's kind of hard to zoom, I know, on this since where we're at on the things. But starting at your park, you know, in this section, we've got, I'm looking at my cheat sheet here. On this one, this one section is about 40, 4,200 feet of trail. Let me back, I guess, let me back up before I say this. You know, this, this trail that we're talking about got laid out is essentially a 10-foot wide. What this, if this was a T-DOT project, it'd be a shared use program or shared use path. And it, it's 10-foot, and at the end of the presentation, it'll tell you. But, you know, this is a pretty beefy section. We've done a lot of these. I just finished one in the Moorestown area almost exactly, but it was in the downtown section. This is a six-inch stone base, and then it's got two layers of asphalt. So it's, it's pretty heavy duty. And so it's going to withstand the time of going through the areas that we're going through that you'll see as we go through these things. Kind of the, and we can go some through that later. But, you know, this section is like, it's about 4,200. It's got a long wooded section in it. And you'll see, I'll find my mouse here. You know, this up here in the upper left is your trailhead that you're, we're starting at. As soon as we come off of that, we've got a bridge. You know, this is probably a, I would say, a small length bridge. It's relatively quote cheap or safe. But as you come through, you know, you've got a long section you're paralleling through here. And you've got, we've got retaining walls that we feel that we have to probably look at doing unless, you know, in these areas, they're, they're pretty steep slopes, obviously. But as we go on through, we've got these identified. And of course, this is not survey. We didn't have a person on the ground, boots on the ground. This was other than Terry, you know, we weren't out there surveying for this yet. So these are information that's taken from LIDAR data, which is pretty, pretty good data. But later on, some of these things are based on just that information. You'll see retaining walls and approximate bridge locations, and those lengths would change. But a survey would obviously make those things better. And you could see if retaining wall could go, but we've got two bridges. The second one you'll see on the bottom down there. Bridge number two, 70 feet long. So that's, that's getting the end of a, it makes it cheaper. You start getting above 70 feet, it's going to be expensive, starting to get more expensive. You know, and some of these things that you'll see to the, just below that notation there, we put potential trailhead. Obviously, there's a lot of thoughts, got to be put into those kinds of things. So we've got those designated more of as, some as a placeholder and maybe what it looked like on the ground when we were out there. So, you know, those are things that, that are just, you know, kind of a holding point to say again, for the second. But again, we've got another sections along retaining walls. We've got five retaining walls on this first section. Now, the, the good thing is, this is your trailhead. You've very got to park there. So, you know, and we'll talk about that at the end. But we, we showed this one ending close on the Phillips Town, or Phillips Wood Road, getting to that point there. So that, that is about 4,200 feet, again, five retaining walls. You'll see it here. Five retaining walls, two bridges. We approximated one, another trailhead possibly you're upgrading. You know, the total cost on that one, you'll see what that is there. You know, it, it is expensive. That one is expensive because you've got, I was looking at my notes here on that one. But that one is, you can see the retaining walls, the bridges. You know, you got two bridges. Those bridges are different lengths, but you can see that right there. There, there's some things that could obviously be shaved off of this. But that was kind of looking at, you know, road crossing there, that's just a typical picture we see for these things where you cross at Phillips Wood Road. The upper corner, the bridge, that's a typical span bridge. Now, that one's probably, it might be 40 foot. So you can see the two we were talking about were larger than that, but that's a typical look. And of course, in the bottom, it's just a typical picture for a trailhead. Then we'll go to the second slide here. This is going from Phillips Wood to a volunteer parkway. And picking up where we left off of up here in the upper right corner, we're starting there. We're saying, of course, it could change either side of the road, if you will. But in this area here, taking off and coming back around. So this, if you follow this picture again, you know, to fit these things on the slides we're talking about, you come around through here and continues in the bottom corner. And then through here, so we follow the left side. This is a long bridge. Now, a good thing about this, it could be changed, you know, we're spanning, we're showing a long span there. And the reason that is, and I mean, Terry may elaborate, but, you know, that's a section that was going to be least impacting the people that are next door here behind you, if you will. So.
That's, Jamie, that's also, there's a, there's an island there, and that's where the water starts. So that's kind of why we picked that because it, it does have some beauty because of the waterfall. So it might be worth a couple of extra dollars.
Yeah, that's right. So that, that one is a 120. That one's going to be a little, a little more pricey than the others, just because of what it is. But there's some options there that might be, it probably would be a totally different kind of bridge than you've seen in a other picture. Again, what you, as we come through here, you know, this one, we're going to go on it. We're going to be closing in on a boat coming through here, going under the highway where the road crossing is for T-DOT, the bridge there now. There's some things I think you'll see here on this slide. You know, this is a, this would be more like what that bridge is that you might see there that Terry was talking about. And then this is something that we see typically to the bottom right, as to which you're going to go under, most likely T-DOT bridging. And then even what the, because when you, when you play in their, in their sandbox, of course, the, the rules change and things have to be certain ways. And most of the time, those things are, are more expensive. And, but they, they're usually pretty amenable for these kinds of projects. And I don't know how the funding would be to supplement, but that would be something to consider there. But this one's, you know, the, the bulk of this cost, if you see, is the one bridge. You know, we're saying it's an estimate a little greater than 200,000. And then actually, this is actually, you know, it's only 1,900 feet, so it's pretty small in length. It's going from the, the next section here. Section B, so we're picking up right, this right here in the upper right again, is where volunteer parkway here. And we're going under the bridge that's in this area here. So we're coming here to the right of the screen and then coming out on the left side. So you're wandering around, meandering through here. This one's more straightforward, fortunately. We're not showing the law here. You continue on, you continue moving in this direction. There's enough flat ground, if you will, where this one is, that cost would be quite a bit less on this one, if this was an option. And then if you're coming back around here, I think in my notes were, I think Pizza Hut is real close to this, if I'm not mistaken. So, uh, so that's what that is there. This one's 3,600 feet. You know, I noted there's no retaining walls, no, no bridges on this one. I made it for myself that I thought this one had to categorize things. Fortunately, this one, I felt like, and we, it's least functional, even though it may be one of the cheapest buys Greenway, but it doesn't do a lot. And I've got a configuration at the end that we'll go through as to maybe, maybe some scenarios to, you know, add a phase to a phase to make the best project overall. Anybody got any questions so far? Or we keep going? We're good?
I have a question. You were talking about the bridge. Has, is there any consideration that the bridge design for the trail would be similar to that, that we already have in our downtown area that the Corps did to, just for the sake of consistency and cohesion?
Yeah, I mean, that, those are usually specific to where we're working at or whomever. So that, that's a pretty easy fit, yes.
Okay. And did you say that T-DOT may be able to contribute on that underpass pathway?
Well, I say on, what is, I don't know how, it may be one of these things. The one we finished with Moorestown, actually got a grant through the state, trying to think of the program it was now. They had, they had a large, large, but it was in the pipeline for many, probably three years plus before they got some things on that. So depending on where this was in your queue for work to be done, that's where I was saying, you could probably put it on the radar at least and let them talk to you about what's options there.
We're, we're going to look at some T-DOT funding. If you'll recall, we had applied for a T-DOT grant on the far end of this from where our sidewalks were at the Speedway back toward town. So that was a T-DOT grant that we didn't get. But we're going to phase this, end of that and try and use, apply for those T-DOT dollars again as a multimodal trail. And where we're going under, I'll look at these several times, may give us more opportunities. We'll just have to explore that once we have a final plan that we can submit.
Thank you, Terry.
All right. We'll, we'll go to number four, getting you closer to Friendship Park. Again, this is in the area where I believe the Pizza Hut is, if you will, coming through. So on the top, just following the long, again, pretty good terrain to, what, what we need to build there, will, paralleling the car lot here, if you will. Coming back out on the bottom side of this, following this around, there's enough area here to do something and not be too constrained. And then again, we're just following on. We, we do run into some, maybe this, these things where it says 35 feet of retaining wall, you know, something like that. Those are probably things that could go away. We're just showing it for kind of more purposes. But those are pretty various, probably insignificant on some level. But when you see where we've got some notations about 375 feet, that's something that's probably not going to go away with the length of that go away. Probably not, but the, it could be greatly reduced depending on, you know, you could do some more excavation, maybe some easement. You know, this, this is right here against the mountain, so to speak, because you can see the terrain to the right is, it's straight up. So probably not a lot of value on the property owner's side. You know, they might be willing to let you excavate wider to reduce the length of those things, which again, will just bring your cost down. So that's good. Just, that's a point down the road for, you know, easements and such. But, so we've got this one here, and if you follow that to the top of the screen, it goes to the bottom of the screen again. And we're, we're hugging, if you will, again, the same area. So we've got this, it says 475 feet. Again, that's pretty extensive, but you can see it's in the bin there or the waterways. So that's where it probably should be, but how do you excavate that? Well, there's things to fix that. So we're showing how, I'd say on lengths of those things. So I think those could be reduced. It just takes some. We're showing how, I'd say on lengths of those things. So I think those could be reduced. It just takes some, uh. Actually boots on the ground survey to, uh, make that happen. I think to see in the final designs. But if you follow the trail on that, to the end, we're getting around the ball fields here at the park. You can see this one's going right around the backside of the ball field. Coming around and it coming out, we just called a, uh, you've got your parking area there. So we, to the right here, we called it, uh, you know, we said, well, this is obviously a good place for a trailhead. So. Um, this is a better picture of that. So. So we're, we're back to volunteer parkway in this area now. And we're saying in this area somewhere here is where we would stop section four. Start section five. So you can see there where we'd be at and it would, you've got a little. Here, this one makes a lot of sense, you know, pretty quickly on some levels. Uh, this one is. This one's actually a little greater than a mile, it's on six thousand, six hundred feet. There we go, six thousand, six hundred feet. Um, again, you see because of wooded area, it's going to be, you know, it's going to be some clearing. It's going to be, uh, you know, you're going to have to clear out. Uh, if we've got a ten-foot wide pathway through here, you're going to have to have it. If you did the retaining wall side of things, you're probably going to be clearing out fifteen feet at least. Uh, you know, part of that's degrading as well. So. You know, those things do cost more because of where we're at in the terrain. Um. The retaining walls, you know, those are again, pretty minimal cost on some, or I say on part of that, but. Um, actually, that was probably the other way around on that. It's supposed to be, I think the numbers were flipped on that one, but the labeling. Uh, but you can see there, the total cost on that one's five hundred and around sixty-five thousand. You know, and to the right here, the picture, you know, this is a, a nice flat area. We weren't in that nice area, but. If you had a, this would be a, a nice typical section. If you were looking at this, if we were, you know, completely. And you had to get an area to be working in, that's what that would be looking like. And everyone to, uh. Next section there, section five. Uh, this one is actually relatively short and we did, there wasn't a means, methods necessarily for. Uh, where things are for where we're starting and ending. But those are, those are very flexible. Well, it makes sense to lengthen dollars and such, but. Here we're starting again, close to the park. Uh, we're running up here and here's another place where we're crossing under the, under the highway here, the T dot road, if you will, a part of volunteer parkway. So we're coming under here and we're coming back around and we just showed, uh, just for convenience. Coming back around the ball fields on the church side here and maybe, you know, maybe there's coordination there with the trailhead behind there for, uh, multiple activities for, for folks there. But anything that, we were showing that, that one has been less than two thousand feet. Again, this one's actually kind of a, a small section. You know, it's pretty easy to get through. Uh, this is what a section would look like to the bottom, uh, highway section that these are just typicals. And most of these, uh, you know, those require all the coordination with T dot for, for their specifics to make these things happen. And then section six, it's actually, if you're looking at the bottom of this screen where we're starting again, coming around here. We're going back by the ball fields here on church side. So we're exiting the screen on the right. And we're looping around, we're on the top of the screen now. We're following around through here again, pretty flat, uh, pretty easy to get through. You know, floodplain area. So that's for greenways, that's perfect. Uh, we cross up here on the top right, you'll see, which will be now the bottom left. Uh, we're, we're recommending to come across the highway and part of that is to. You've got to cross somewhere and this seemed to be a place to get back as we get closer to the track. Uh, you know, of course, to the campground side and taking care of some things there. But, you know, we just, again, show here. Green flag ending that section and a trailhead there to be, uh, you know, maybe again, that's determined later, obviously, but. This one, I think it's the immediate, yeah, we, we put bridge. Yeah, it was, I think that was on my notes I had on that one. Uh.
I will, I will add that one of the reasons we're crossing over to the campground is I've already met with the owner of that campground. Uh, he actually approached us to make sure we were putting the greenway on his side. He, he wants it on his side. So he's very, very cooperative across on that campground.
All right. That section's, uh, you know, it's three thousand feet. So that, that's a good little section there. That, that does a lot for a lot of. Quickly, I think, just from looking at that perspective there, especially if you've got somebody that's wanting this on. That's always, uh, entertaining in most, but, uh, so that's good to hear that you've got that. Uh, number seven. Again, picking up, we're on that side, if you will, where the, uh, the campground is there, Shadrack Campground going through there, following around on the top there. You'll see in the picture, we go to the bottom. And we just keep continuing to hug and come around the edge of the campground sites there till we're saying we'll get to the road section there to where you enter the campground. Somewhere in that area to, uh, you know, stop in this section. Uh, this one's seven. So, you know, this one we just showed out is about twenty-three hundred feet, uh, relatively. So this, this one's, uh, got the bridge. Um, so there's, uh, there's some, um. Yeah, I think that one's. That one's pretty straightforward too on that one. Um. Then getting closer to the end, we've got two more sections, this one and number nine.
Let me ask a quick question. Back in section number six, where we're going to actually cross the volunteer parkway, is that correct?
Yes.
Well, we put up, uh, included in that is, uh, uh, appropriate, uh, traffic lighting.
We actually, we go under the parkway. We go under the parkway.
Okay, I thought, I didn't think we crossed the parkway.
No, all of our, all of our crossway parkings are using exist, opposed using existing dry tunnels.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. And then, uh, flipping to the last, here's the section there. Um, going to the last one there, you know. I think, uh, some of the other places we talked about road crossings, you know, we've been had, had put in speed humps in a couple of places. That was just a sample scenario, sample picture there, uh, for some of the others. In the last section here, number nine, to get you to the end to, uh, to the track, uh, to the, to the Bristol track, if you will. Uh, you've got the little section there that's already existing, but up here at the top, uh, is where we're coming, we're starting there. And then going through the top of the picture, follow to the bottom, bottom left, coming around and ending. Down here at the, uh, at the end of the campground site there. And that, that one. Again, that one's very, very easy to take care of. And I think Terry mentioned that before about the previous items about that one, but. Um, this is a total section summary of what we're, uh, what you've just saw. Uh, you can see there at the top, you know, the, I had that put in there, the, for every foot that we put down, uh, this section, again, got a shared use path. Uh, that's what T, if this was a T dot grant, that's what they would call it because it's a ten-foot from obviously multi-use things. Uh, six inches of stone base, that's what's under most subdivision roads. So it's pretty heavy base, uh, three inches binder. Uh, if you pull in your subdivision today, uh, your subdivision's going to have six inches of stone. Uh, based on you're going to have two, probably two or three inches of binder and one inch. So this is a, a road. I mean, it's a very heavy duty road, if you want to call it that. These are more of the standard, uh, depths of base and binder. And, uh, you know, to good, good or to bad, you know, with all this events of the day, you know, asphalt's a direct, uh, is directly proportional to. So these prices that we have worked up here, everything worked up here, but especially the asphalt for the, for the trails. Uh, you can see thirty-five dollars for every foot you put down. And that's, um. That is just the stone and asphalt. That is not the excavation part. So that's, you know, there's other aspects to it, but. Um, uh, these were based off two thousand and nineteen, two T dot data they had done. And we had, uh, reference for road projects, trail projects. You can see there's, you've got ten retaining walls possibly throughout the project. Again, that could go, uh, I think could go down. Um, on some, well, you know, we got twenty-five hundred feet, that's half a mile. Uh, I think we can bring that number down, just depending. Five bridges, the lengths on those will go up or down, but I think those locations, you're going to have five bridges. One of those being a, the long one there that Terry mentioned, you know, it's a hundred and twenty-foot bridge. Uh, the trailheads, those are really dependent on what you guys have in place or want to have in place or want to, you know, see in the future. Uh, the miscellaneous part, those are the different things related to get everything in there. And you can see your, your total project cost, which is pretty, I mean, you can see where we're at, we're from twenty-six hundred feet. No, it's, uh, you're at tw- two point four million. And again, I think that's where we're at with the things that we've got, but, um. I think the, um, I don't know, you know, I get, the, the only, I think the thing I would say again is, um. I, I think you've got the, I think the two notes here that I had, if you had. Let me go back to, uh, I guess before I go to that, uh, has anybody got a question or anything about what I've got on the screen or go back to?
I do have one quick question of like, when you're talking about, because I guess what we're looking at here. What I've calculated, you're, it's about four point nine eight miles is what this trail is. So you're looking at. Give or take, I mean, four hundred and eighty-six thousand, almost a half a million dollars a mile.
Yes.
Of other projects, I mean, how does that fall into place of other projects? I mean, of a half a million a mile? Is that standard? Is that high? Is that low? Wh- where, where does that fall?
For, for what you, the one, we finished one in Moorestown, but they actually had a T dot grant. And I, I, I want to say, this would be great for you all, say, I can't remember. The dollars, but I think they were awarded a one million dollar grant. That sounds really great. Obviously, we're talking two point four. That one in our project log was two thousand and fourteen project. It was finished last year. So you go scale of economies there for what you're at. Now that's, you know, things may change at this, they may want everybody outside walking instead of, uh. You know, being at the banjo festivals and that's going to work, we'll see, I guess, but. You know, greenways are an easy way to get people outside and doing things. Uh, social distancing's, uh, easy there, but. A half a million dollars, I think, probably a good baseline for, uh, projects to be successful and these things, because if you do. You know, if you divide five hundred thousand, uh, you're just value footage, uh, just by saying that number. You know, that's a, that's fourteen thousand feet, but it's not going to be that much. So you're probably going to get ten thousand, but you might get two miles or something. So it's. It, that seems to be the line that we see for people if they're going to put their own money into it. Um, you know, probably if you get fifty thousand, you're probably needing to be in the area of where you've got, uh. Less constraints like the, the grates, the slopes and such. And if you're just, just paving, blowing and going, so to speak, and you, you're in areas around the park, down there. It's a park, two fifty probably could get you somewhere. But I think once you exit those areas, you probably have about double that amount to get you back to the other side of another trailhead.
Man, so I think all in all, we're, I mean, at that price, uh, I mean, especially the, the planning number that they recommend you start with on these greenways is a million dollars a mile.
Yeah.
Follow, you know, following our creek, uh, we were kind of shocked at the terrain and how level it was and how little grading. Uh, so I, I bet I think, uh, you know, the half million, uh, is, is actually a pretty good number. I think we were pretty surprised to see it drop that much.
Okay. I was just curious. I didn't know that's, you know.
Obviously, the, obviously the more grading, you know, digging into, I mean, the, the retaining walls, uh. Is going to add significantly to it. And really until you get on the ground and start surveying, you can't tell. How far you're going to have to dig into a bank, but all in all, we've got a pretty good path. Uh, it was kind of surprising at how good a path it was from the get-go. So. Um. We think the, actually, we were shocked that the number was, come out as low as it was.
What about the, um, as far as have you looked at, not only, I mean, just like with any project, you've got the. Original project, but of. What the yearly cost is going to be to maintain it.
Right.
I mean, obviously, once we, once we get, now that we have this and we have some specifics, yeah, we can look at some, some costs. Um, you know, early on won't be significant. You're just talking about general maintenance. Uh, it's a pretty, as he was saying, it's a pretty beefy trail. Uh, so. Most of it's just going to be, you know, maintaining right of ways, trash every day, those type of things. So it's, it's, you know, there is a cost there, but we have not figured those yet. But we.
Yeah. Okay. I was trying to swap back over to the group. Can y'all see the Google screen?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. What I was, what I was going to end with, if you will, is just kind of, you know, if you, you know. Everybody would love to spend this, you know, whatever amount of money to develop the whole twenty-six thousand feet, but. Obviously, we can't do that. Uh, one of the notes that I thought was better, uh, you know, from the planning side for you all, you know, again, this is our scope of work here. Uh, appears the very beginning, Rooster Front Park, down here, of course, again, is, uh, Bristol Motor Speedway. Uh, the notes that I had made, uh, on kind of for you guys to maybe consider is. If, if I was spending money, probably to the point of the councilman's question there was, you know, what's most attractive to build first is I thought sections five, six and seven cumulatively. Those sections are, I think, trying to give you a better perspective here, right here. Here's, here's, uh, Friendship Park. Five and so part of, uh, see four. Yeah, five. So five is coming around here, coming around the ball fields, coming through here and ending. Uh, close to where Terry was talking about the guy that was, uh, wanting to, uh, allow the bridge and the trail on his side, if you will. That, that section, I did the math real quick. That's about seventy-two hundred feet of, uh, path of, of, uh, shared use. Uh, and that one is about a little over five hundred and sixty thousand dollars, if you add all three of those together from what we just showed. So that one's a little package, if you will. Uh, another little package I thought would probably would be the most, you know. Uh, as obviously back here and not really any preference, if you will, was just section one up at your beginning point, Rooster Front. And section two, which gets you to Phillipswood area. That one is, um, about sixty-one hundred feet. Uh, again, actually the dollars on that are about, I think I wrote down cumulatively, five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So you've got less footage, you've got a trailhead to start with, that kind of gets people excited, maybe. The, it's actually, you know, we did label it number one kind of for that reason. Uh, but those are the two that I, I thought were, if you had a package deal. Uh, my, my third option that I've been looking at was number four. Uh, this one would might be more, I don't know if it gets your neighbors involved, maybe in your, your communities. This is. Starting right here, if you will, going by Bill Gatten coming around. This is a really nice section to come through. I mean, it's a. Probably your nice section through the park, through the plan that we're looking at. And an ending in a great spot, you know, you may, there may be a little bit of decision on a trailhead here near the Pizza Hut, if you will. Uh, but that one is about sixty-six hundred feet and it's about, I picked the three on purpose. One just by itself is about five hundred and sixty-five thousand. So those were three. Uh, one of them being its own merit and the other ones were combinations thereof. So those were a kind of half a million dollar, a little greater projects. I, I thought were probably more considerable for something that you might want to do here in the near future.
So I had a question about bridges. Um, just, uh, and engineers know how to do it, but we've had some of the highest water with Beaver Creek. So just recently. So are bridges built where they're high enough for, for high water to go under? Or do they, are they built where they can take it over the bridge?
Depending, they should be designed for what we'd call a hundred-year storm. Just like we would do that with, we were, we were working with Jacob Chandler on the sewer line project there through Steel Creek, I believe. And Cedar Creek, I'm sorry. And I think, you know, all the manholes that we had to worry about were based on a hundred-year foot elevations. So we would do the same with these, but they would be. They would be, they're anchored on the side. So if they were, you know, they could, yeah, they're not a hard structure. So they're, they build the foundations and then, and then the, essentially attach those to the foundation. So. If it broke loose for some larger event, you know, it's almost Lego-like. You can go and, you know, buy again and plug and play, so to speak. But we would design those greater than that elevation.
Okay, thanks. I have a quick question. Uh, Jamie, realizing that some of this is in the floodplain, about how much of this trail is in the floodplain?
Uh, I'd have to get you that number. Uh, I imagine, um, just from, just from, you know, physical and the, the, what we're going next to. I would bet probably at least eighty percent of it. I can't say, Terry, you think anything higher than that probably?
Probably higher than that, probably ninety plus.
Yeah.
It all follows right beside a Beaver Creek.
Yeah.
That would be a natural understanding. And so the construction of the trail is taking that into cons- consideration. I think, as you mentioned. There was, uh, could you go back to that, Jamie, about it's, uh, six inches of, of the gravel and then, uh, was it three inches of bonding? And then two layers?
Ma'am, and it's, yes, let me, uh, get that here, uh.
I think six inches of gravel, three inches of bonding, and then two layers of paving. So.
That's right. It should be, can you see that on that screen?
I can. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that, yeah, like I said, this, this is a road. It's a small road, but yes.
Right. And so it's designed to hold up to this type of, of weather.
Yeah, it would be, of course, it's going to be flush, you know, with the ground. So most of these, they're, they're, they're going to be submerged if it's, like, you know, Terry said, if it's greater than 90% of where, you know, the water's coming out of the banks, you probably would sustain damage just like you would if you were in a subdivision, your road was partially, you know, something happening there. But you've, you've got a good wearing surface here with those top two layers of asphalt, that, that, that's pretty much. And I'm pretty sure that's, that is the T-Dot standard, if this was a total T-Dot project.
Correct. I just want, so that the public, if they had any questions about that, because we've had an especially wet spring, and so that's been a big, a big question for some.
Absolutely.
Councilwoman Powers, this is actually a, a good use of floodway. They, they can't be used for other, other types of, of uses. So park-type facilities, especially trails of this nature, that's, that's, that's a good, that's a good use for this type of property.
Thank you. That was my understanding. You know, we've all been involved with encouraging the whole trail being developed for, what now, Terry, four or five years? And thank you, Mr. Sor. I think that's a very good point to make.
We're, if you'll think about it, we're actually cleaning out that floodway. We're, we're going to brush. So we're actually making it a better floodway if there was a major event. We're improving the floodway.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Ma, Mayor, I think if, if there are no other questions, I think a couple of comments, and I'm sorry I had to get off here. Actually, we lost our main landline at the city hall. And that, that dropped me off. We have internal communication, certainly 911 is up and those type things. And we may be, our landline may be back up now, but that, so temporarily exited, at least on, on the audio portion of this. But one of the next steps that, that we need to do with Jamie and McGill and Associates is, when we, when we get the other side of this event, and, and we can once again reconvene with, with the neighborhood and reconvene with the public, we want to have public meetings about this, probably multiple meetings, and then individual meetings with property owners along, along the route. We've got, we, we, we have a lot of information to share. Zoom meetings, that's fine for, for what we're trying to do, but it doesn't lend itself well to engage the public in, in this type of a project and, and, and denoting the scope of it. So that's at a yet-to-be, to-be-determined time. As you may remember, a scope of our work, or a plan of work for this year, was to complete the preliminary engineering report, which has been done with your, with your report today. Take this to the public and then begin the acquisition of right of way. And we did have funding set aside in this year's budget to connect with that. We obviously wouldn't move forward with that until we've had an opportunity to, to engage the public and, and, and get feedback from them as, as to the project and so forth there. So some of those dollar, right away dollars, probably all of those will need to relevant to next fiscal year. But once the, once we enter the next phase of managing COVID-19, we'll begin to look at, at public meetings and, and bring Jamie and McGill and Associates back to town and have, and have those meetings. Would like to point out, and I, I'm, I'm not sure, what, what all, what was discussed during the presentation, but we will seek substantial grant funding in terms of advancing this project. And typically, 20% grant funding is, is a match is required from the locality. So we can do this phase approach, as Jamie indicated, there's, there's some logical phasing elements to this project. So as grant funds become available, we'll move forward. One of the, one of the key elements to grant applications, though, is that right of way has been, has been obtained in advance of, of an entity reviewing a grant opportunity.
Okay, thank you. And I think also in past meetings, in talking about Chattanooga, which has been quite some time since they worked on their Riverwalk, but they worked really hard. And I, at, at that time, when it was not complete, the majority, as in initially, all of the right of way was, was donated by property owners, because people understood the value and worked with the city to make that happen. So hopefully, some of our rolling out of this, et cetera, will help our citizens to see benefits and that some of that right of way, if not all of it, might be provided from, from folks along the trail. Anybody else have comments or questions or anything? Yes?
Yeah, this, this definitely, on the heels of talking about, you know, some of the tourism aspects of our area. I mean, if we had something like this, and we talk about, you know, the hotels and, and the camping, you know, decline, I can see where the camping could, could dramatically increase with a program like this as it go down the road. So, so it's a good project.
That's a great point. Our camping has primarily been associated with our races, but they wouldn't have to be. The facilities are there, pretty nice shower facilities, et cetera. So that's at the track. And then we've had a couple other campground areas developed in addition. So I think that's a great point to make.
Yeah, a camper could literally, you know, just take a bicycle to the campgrounds and go all the way toward downtown.
Yep. Yep. Yeah. Pretty exciting. So.
Terry, are we still, are y'all still in the, with the Parks Commission? Are y'all still in conversation about the opportunity for camping at Steel Creek?
Well, we're not, we're not really in any conversation right now. It's in the goals to do a comprehensive review of the entire park and kind of come up with, with what the long-range plan and, and, you know, property usage of the park is. Obviously, COVID-19's kind of slowed everything a bit, but our next step will be to contract a comprehensive plan for the entire park property. And, you know, and if, if, if a campground, I mean, obviously, that's been brought up. So we would look and see, you know, if there's value, if that's reasonable or.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. Anybody else for any comments? Jamie, we appreciate your being with us. I also appreciate your Carter County roots. And hopefully, you, this project was of interest and to you, it's definitely great interest. So we appreciate your being with us and taking time to go over it. Also, Terry, we know you and other staff are very excited about this. So appreciate the time you've spent getting it ready as well. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Jamie. And Tal Boom, thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah. That's right. Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
We'll be seeing you again.
Meeting. If you need something, feel free to reach out to Terry, and we can pass it around.
So, thanks. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So next on our agenda, we have an ordinance that we have considering for reading on civil emergencies to add to our process. And this was requested. And thank you, Danielle Smith, for getting it ready for us today. And I would think you could go ahead and talk about it with us. Go on, Mr. Sor, do you want to kick it off? Or you want Danielle to start?
It, it, it doesn't matter. That's, that's okay, Danielle. Why don't you go ahead?
When we met last week, or when you all met last week, you expressed interest in, or some members of council expressed interest in amending our code of ordinances in a way that would give city council some oversight over declarations of emergency. The specific example that was cited was Kingsport. And so this ordinance is very similar to what Kingsport had, in that while the mayor and the city manager would still be able to, to declare the emergency, it would only be effective for three days unless city council met and resolved that it would have continuing effect beyond that. There's a fair amount of flexibility still as drafted, because the length of time that it could remain effective after that resolution would be up to council. So they, you know, we're approving that this initial declaration of emergency and any extensions thereof, or you could say, we're approving this declaration of emergency and, and we'll look again at any extensions. And so there is flexibility in how it's drafted. In my memo that I put together to give you a background or as cover memo, Kingsport does have a three-day provision. I don't think that that's really the right provision for Bristol. I think Kingsport's in a little bit of a different circumstance. And I would probably not recommend, from a legal standpoint, going with a three-day. The only reason it's drafted that way is that that's what, you know, Kingsport had, and that sense I got from council last week. And we don't have the ability to meet very quickly under normal circumstances. Right now, the governor's declared the state of emergency, and he's lifted the Open Meetings Act and allows for electronic meetings. But the current state of the law doesn't allow for electronic meetings for Bristol. We are, unlike Kingsport, because Kingsport actually has charter provision that allows for electronic meetings. So I think Kingsport is much more able to meet within three days than Bristol is. And so my recommendation would be that this be amended to, say, seven days, which would match the original state of emergency declaration that state law allows for, for the mayor's declaration. And there are other places that, that, you know, this is really open for your discussion now and open for you to look at and see what you think works best for Bristol. I will also say that, as I said in my memo, there's nothing in the state law that actually says that you can put this provision in place. There's also nothing that prohibits it. There's, I think, an argument to make on both sides that, that there's authority to amend your code of ordinances in this way. And, you know, for one thing, we're a Dillon's rule state. And so typically, when we have power, it's because the, the cities have power because the state explicitly gives it to them. On the other hand, there's language in Title 58, at least, that gives the political subdivision the power to extend the state of emergency. And that may be something that has been delegated to the mayor, but it's also possible that the political subdivision itself could say, we have this power, not just the mayor. So this is one of those areas where you have no clear legal authority for changing the ordinance in this way. What you do have is other cities that have enacted ordinances that are similar to what you're trying to accomplish. And there's also no legal authority saying that you can't change the ordinance in this way. So with that, unless anybody, I'll answer any questions that you all have on this.
One question I'd like to throw out there. I mean, what, why we really need to make this change? What was the thinking behind this? And then secondly would be that, you know, Danielle, I wholeheartedly agree with, with what you're talking about, you know, the three days, because, you know, typically, you know, we have a hard time in a lot of situations of trying to get together in three days. So I would be more inclined to be more in favor of the seven day versus the three. But still, I'd like to find out, you know, why do we feel like we really needed this change?
Well, since I brought it up, I'll, I'll be more than happy to address that. Is that it, it goes back to basis of organization. We are a council of five that is elected by the people. Our mayor is then appointed. I've served as mayor, Chad has, Margaret has. And we all understand we're appointed by council. And we're, as Margaret explained to me, and I agree, you know, the mayor is in the position to reflect the will of council. And so the will of council can't really be absolutely projected or shared without council taking this action. It's still very subjective. And this gives it the, the concrete basis as to how that is comprehensively done.
But when this action was taken on this recent COVID-19, I think we all felt and followed exactly what the Southern County, as well as the state, were recommending to do. I don't think anyone locally on council or mayor or city manager took it upon their own self to say, hey, let's have a state of emergency. I think we all went into this with, with great intentions.
And I agree. I think that this just gives us that next layer of good government.
So on the, on the seven days, the way that, the way that it's set up now, maybe I'm wrong, but if we wait seven days, then when a state of emergency is put in place, it's only put in place for seven days. So if we are waiting seven days to actually vote on it, then if there, you're signing another one at that point, I mean, that's what.
What state law allows is for the emergency to be put in place for seven days initially, and then it can be extended for subsequent seven-day periods. And so if you, if you change this to read from three days to seven days, then basically what you'd be saying is, the initial state of emergency can be in place, but then it cannot be extended without council's resolution approving it.
Okay. So with this, it could, it could be put in place for seven days, and then it could not be extended until it was approved by council?
Right. If council didn't pass a resolution within that seven-day period, then it would automatically end. There'd be no extension of state of emergency. Now, you know, the mayor could wait a day and declare another state of emergency. But that's, I don't know that you, you cannot, I don't think you can take the power away from the mayor to declare a state of emergency. What you're, you may be able to, but you can't move entirely.
Which is true for the other locations as well.
I, yes. I mean, state law is pretty clear that the mayor has that authority to declare that state of emergency.
Right.
And the city manager has, you know, parallel authority under a different title in state law.
And I.
Is that state law, or is, is this, is this set up by state law, or is this by our charter, which in turn is the law? But is, a lot of this is based on the way our charter is written, correct?
No, this is Title 58, which is state law. It's the State Law on Emergency Management and Mutual Aid Agreements and Disaster Declarations, confers upon the mayor of the authority to declare a state of emergency. Title 38, which is in the Prevention and Protection Section of the state law, confers upon the city manager the authority to declare states of emergency under different circumstances.
Right.
And our, our code of ordinances mirrors Title 38 and incorporates the provisions of Title 38 into that code of ordinances, and makes clear that the city manager is the official who's got that authority. And so, you know, under Title 38, you could make another official, you could designate another official to declare states of emergency, but you're always going to have to have an official who can declare a state of emergency.
Right.
So, yeah. And I, I assume, I assume this is probably similar across the states. You have to have somebody who can act fast when there are things that are happening, natural disasters that you want to have happen quickly and whatever else, unnatural disasters that, that cause huge problems, health risks, violence, disruption, or whatever. So it can't be, it can't be by committee at that point, when it's an emergency involving initially.
That's right. Both Title 38 and Title 58 provide for one person to make that declaration. Title 38, it's in our city, with the way that our system, our city is set up, that the default is the city manager, but it could be the mayor, or it could be, you know, the vice mayor, if the council decided they wanted to do that. But there's got to be an official who's designated as that person who can declare, declare the state of emergency.
And that's in 38? What about Title 58, though? It can't, that's the mayor regardless?
That's, that's the mayor. The mayor there has the power to declare that state of emergency.
Right. If the, if Title 38 is more the implementation pieces.
Well, they're different. They are, they're, they're completely different states of emergency in some respects. One is for the mayor, and it relates a lot to how the city does business. The other one is the city manager under Title 38, is really, when you look at the powers that are set out for him in that title, it's things like closing liquor stores, closing gas stations, closing places that might be, it's, it's about the prevention of crime. And it is also broad enough that you might be able to say, I mean, it's, it's a, the states. the states of emergency that it's talking about are, are natural disasters that are going to cause harm to a large number of people if nothing is done. Or other kinds of events that might cause, cause harm to a large number of people if nothing's done.
Okay. Also, Kingsports, um, they approved it, um, within a few days and, and they are not, are they meeting every week to renew it or theirs goes on indefinitely?
My understanding is that Kingsport City Council, when they met and approved the initial declaration of emergency, that they approved extensions of it as well.
Which if, if a council decided at some point it shouldn't be extended, that could be at a call meeting to, I mean that, but, but not have, not require every time to extend.
Yes.
Right. Which I think that's absolutely what we would want because otherwise it gets too burdensome when at, at some state of emergency, it's pretty difficult for a body to get together. Um, difficult for the folks who convene and, and also no telling what individuals on campus might be facing in their personal lives, et cetera, that, that prevent them from, from participating.
Right. Kingsport's ordinance has that flexibility of not saying they have to meet every seven days to approve it. They can, they've got that flexibility.
It's the initial.
I don't think any of us take, take that role lightly. Um, if you recall before the first declaration was entered into, I spent considerable amount of time on the phone over the weekend with all five of you. Uh, updating you on, on Department of Health recommendations and, and, and letting you know that, that, that the chief medical officer was in the process of issuing that order on Monday. And what they asked of us and, and, and ask of Kingsport, Solomon County and the town of Bluff City was that political support behind the chief medical officer, who, who really had the unilateral authority to issue that stay at home order. But I think everyone wants to do what they believe is the right thing that's data driven. Uh, but they also want the local governing bodies actively engaged. And that was the purpose. You know, like I said, I spent a lot of time with the, with these of the five of you all uh, over that weekend. And, and I think it was initially the intent that you all would have a resolution at your next call meeting to look at. And I, and I think, I think with, when they, Margaret had some conversations with you all, it felt like that wasn't needed at the time, or at least one or more of y'all felt like that wasn't the direction to go. So, you know, we did what, what, what we had the authority to do at the time, at the request of the Department of Health to support their initiative.
Yeah. And I bring this up, you know, in, in, in lieu of, you know, we don't know what the next emergency is going to be. And I just, you know, don't want us, you know, get us into a situation or us to get into a situation where we may have someone on hand side that's going to have to respond and react very quickly. And that's the only reason I bring this out and just throw it out there for discussion.
Well, and to that point, Malin, I think that's a, a great point. Um, I think number one, the best time to think strategically is when we all are, um, when everybody gets along and you've got a really great council that works together like this one has with our city manager and staff. Um, in some areas, that's not always the case and we don't know what the next situation may be. I think that this allows the mayor and the city manager to have that, uh, immediate authority and to carry it if followed Danielle's suggestion for seven days. And then what it does is it brings the council back in engagement. We have any one of the five of us, Margaret has done a great job. Any one of the five of us, I believe, could have done a great job. But, you know, we don't know what our future councils will bring. We think that they will all be able to work as well as we have, but we know that sometimes they don't. And so what this does is it just provides that, that layer of good government that not just for today, but in thinking about the future. So the seven days I, I think would, would allow for plenty of time if there needed to be a state of emergency called and for council to be fully informed. Bill, to your point, y'all did a great job of bringing this to the table and of keeping us in, uh, informed. It, it's not, like I said last week, it has nothing to do with current leadership. It's not personal in any way. It's just that next layer of better government. Um, I would be interested to know Danielle, Kingsport has now, uh, made it possible for them to meet electronically. I think that we would be foolish to, to not try to embrace, uh, something similar to that. We've all gotten pretty good at this. And if there is, uh, an emergency, this would be much easier to work with than trying to actually physically convene. So the, the three points to make is working towards better government. It's to say that it doesn't impede the initial, uh, powers of the mayor or the city manager. Seven days would give us ample time to be brought to the table to, to be sharing part of that decision-making. And what does, working through this digitally after this has all, what does that look like and what do we need to do to make that happen?
Um, Councilwoman Powers, Kingsport's charter allows them to meet electronically. And so if you, the ideal would be if the state legislature would take this up and consider it for all cities across the state, really. Um, there's one city, I believe, that's allowed to meet electronically under the general law because they meet the criteria of being a, you know, a city with three members and less than 5,000 people or something like that. But a, a change to state law in general would be, um, would be preferable probably. Uh, it may be that the general assembly hears that from a lot of different governing bodies, because I think a lot of governing bodies have had this experience now of needing electronic, feel like it's doing a good, it's doing good for them. But absent that, then, you know, you could ask for a charter change to allow you to meet electronically, something similar to what Kingsport has. So those would be your steps going forward. Unfortunately, past May 18th, we won't have the ability to meet electronically unless the governor extends that. You know, to go forward.
So, and that's a longer process for a charter change. And we're already looking at a, a couple of things. So that's something we can certainly take up if the legislature does not do that. So, but we can't do that immediately. Um.
So are we saying that we cannot meet, for instance, in a work session where no voting will be happening? We can't meet right now. State law would not allow, our charter would not allow us to meet in this, in this format, uh, for a work session or for a planning commission session or for a industrial development meeting or anything like that?
Governing bodies are not allowed to meet by phone or electronically. There's a physical quorum present requirement. And that applies to you all and it applies to all of your boards and commissions. So Planning Commission and the Industrial Development Board and all of the others. Um, you know, the only exception that we've made have been limited ones where people have been allowed to call into work sessions and not participate in the discussion because as you guys know, case law extends to not just voting, but anytime council is deliberating toward a decision, it needs to be in a public meeting. And deliberation toward the decision involves sharing your own opinions and convincing others of their, you know, to, to agree with you. There's a lot that goes into that beyond just taking a vote.
I'd request that, uh, Danielle, if you would, is, is contact your counterparts at the state level and see if the state is kind of leaning in a direction like this. And if there's no word, then I would move that we do proceed with, uh, changing our charter.
Absolutely.
I would think that we all can also talk to our legislators, um, to say that we've been, feel pretty good about this. And, uh, we also can get feedback from our community um, for their ability to participate. We do have our, uh, analytics that have shown at different times, we've had more people participate and with us meeting online than we have with, um, in person or streaming during the time that it's been streamed, et cetera. So, um, I think that supports it, but I think absolutely it's on us to talk to our legislators who are the ones who can, um, can make that happen.
Yeah, I think what's fresh on their minds as well, because you know, they've been using it themselves a lot also. Um, maybe they could at least get the governor to extend this for a period of time till such charter changes could be made, you know, across the, the state.
Well, the difference is the state has the ability to do it. They had the ability to do it of calling in for a meeting. Um, we do not on the county, on the city and county level, but the state has that, has had that ability, um, to communicate that way.
Is, I don't think they've been able to hold committee meetings or anything along those lines. We have one of the strictest sunshine laws that applies across the, across our bodies. Danielle?
Um, you know, I don't, I'm not an expert on what the state is allowed to do because they're not my client, but I, I think there are state agencies that are allowed to meet electronically because there's provisions in the open meetings we're having electronic meetings. It's just, they're not open to us. They're not open to cities like ours.
Right. Correct.
And probably counties, you know, as well. It's, it's limited to participate.
No, and I think that, I mean, if there is a possibility, I'm, I'm with you. If there's a possibility that the state is going to and they're going to act fairly quickly, then okay, that would be a easier and shorter, shorter process. Uh, but if not, then whatever we need to do to start making that request of changing our charter, then I think that's the route we should go.
Yeah. Yeah. I think we should strongly emphasize to them, we're only looking at this in case of emergency, not as a general.
No, I'm, I'm talking about even general of the fact that we run into a situation of where not for a quorum, but if there is a situation as happened not too long ago, when I was out of town during a work session and was able to call in and participate. So.
I agree. I think it's very good. And it's, it's, it's thinking. And I think that that's who we are. And this is part of our new normal is digital meeting and, you know, putting into place the social distancing and everything that will be ongoing moving forward. I don't think, I don't know that we'll ever go back to being all clamored together, that we will practice social distancing. And for some of us that are out of town for business or for whatever reason, uh, being able to, uh, come in digitally. I mean, other than physically being there, what's the difference?
I think we're all, I think we're all in agreement. A charter change would, would, will have plenty of time to do that as a charter change. So, um, we can work on the legislative part and the charter change requires approval by the legislature. So if they follow their regular schedule, that would not probably be able to happen until next January. So, um.
They, they're going back into session in June.
Correct.
So Danielle, on this section 26.7, if we wanted to amend it to six days, do we make a motion to amend 26.7 or do we have to pass 26.7 first and then amend it?
Um, first step is that we need to have a motion in a second on the ordinance as a whole. Uh, because we've had a discussion, but we haven't actually had any, any formal action to take up the ordinance. After you've had that motion in the second, then you could move to amend the ordinance as drafted. So instead of three days, it's seven, it's seven days. If you have a majority vote on that, then you could move forward with voting on the ordinance as a whole, if there's no further amendments.
So we vote on the total ordinance and not just the section first?
Right.
So, just so I'm.
Well, sorry, go ahead.
Of, just so that I am clear of the reason for changing it from three days to seven days is just giving more time for council to meet and is that what we're doing? Is that why the seven days to the three? Is there anything other reason why we're from the three to seven?
I think it's primarily looking, we don't know what types of emergencies and we don't want to make it so restrictive that, um, that could hamper, hamper things. And just a, a possible emergency, and certainly it's been seen across our country different times, is where we lose the ability to communicate. That our, um, cell phones are down or power is down or whatever. So, um, just be sure that, um, that, that we take into consideration different, different possibilities. So to allow a little more flexibility, I think is three to seven.
Okay.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
Motion to approve ordinance 20 dash six with the addition of section 26 dash seven.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second and, um, does somebody want to offer? Oh, I guess, yeah. So somebody should, if somebody wants to offer an amendment.
Well, do we have to vote on this first and then offer the amendment?
No. Offer the amendment, then we'll vote on the amendment, then we'll vote on the ordinance as amended.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the ordinance from the three days to the seven as Danielle had stated in her, her letter.
I'll second.
Okay. And Chad seconds. Okay. Um, discussion. Okay. I think we talked, this is actually good to reach consensus before we get to the formalities. Okay. Um, seeing no discussion, then I'll, uh, entertain a roll call vote on the amendment. Tara.
Okay. Fire Robin?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
All right. So, uh, we have approved the amendment. So is there any further discussion on the ordinance as amended? If not, then, uh, we'll do a roll call vote on the ordinance as amended. Tara?
Fire Robin?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Great. Um, so then Danielle will have a, uh, second reading on the 28th that are called meeting, correct?
I believe that's the schedule.
That's, that, that's what, that's what, uh, you discussed last Thursday, I think, is to have a call meeting at 10:30 and then, then once the, the vote was taken, then we would roll into our, our, uh, discussion for, on the comprehensive plan at 10:30 on the 28th.
Great.
And that'd be on the 27th, correct?
So on Tuesday, the 28th.
Tuesday, the 28th. So we're not meeting on the 27th. And what time is our meeting on the 28th? Is it nine AM or 11?
It's, it's at 10:30. It was originally scheduled as a work session. We will go ahead and advertise it as a call meeting and then we'll roll into the work session af- after you've concluded um, your consideration of, of 20 dash six on second reading.
Okay.
Thank you. And, uh, Mr. Sora, do you have other, uh, information or comments or anything to provide for us?
Uh, just to, to us council, I, I did, I was on a conference call with 14 other managers from across the state yesterday afternoon. And, uh, we're providing information to Tennessee Municipal League who is providing information to the governor's task force regarding the reopening of the state. Obviously they're very, there, there are subcommittees that are looking at, at, at a variety of issues related to reopening the state. Um, a- after, at, uh, around the 30th of May, May 1st, whenever the governor decides to, to do that. From a local government standpoint, 15 of us were asked to participate, uh, in what would be involved in reopening local government. Uh, I'm excited to say, as I said last week, there's not a lot to what we need to do. Uh, from a basic service standpoint, we have continued to provide those services. We do have, as, as Terry advised, uh, advised council last Thursday, there will be elements of our parks and recreation programming that will open back up as, as conditions are, as conditions warrant to do that. But, um, from, from a Bristol perspective, we're very solid. Uh, we've continued to inspect construction projects. A lot of cities have not. A lot of cities, uh, construction has stopped. So their planning departments have, have shut down. Our planning departments have continued to operate. So in many, many ways, we're ahead of the curve in terms of reopening local government. We never really, never really shut down. So, but, but, uh, excited to be a part of that process and to hear what others had, uh, had done outside of our Northeast Tennessee group of managers, which have a, have had a daily call since. which have, uh, have had a daily call since for probably over a month now.
Okay.
Nothing else. Uh, well, one other question. I, I know we talked about, I think Counsel McKean mentioned the possibility of a meeting on Thursday, the twenty third. Uh, I just need some feedback as to, do you want to do that? Or do, or is your next meeting, your next meeting be the twenty eighth? If you want to meet on the twenty third, what, what would you like to see that in, uh, that agenda encompass?
At this point, in my view, uh, it's unnecessary unless something were to change. And, uh, uh, I, I think you, what you could do is, is call each of us individually if something were to change. But it seems like over the last several days, the Sullivan, number of Sullivan County cases have been steady. And, uh, looks like, you know, throughout nationally, um, especially in the hotspots, um, things are, the curve is starting to go down the hill. So, um, I, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, alright.
I agree. I think, uh, one thing that will be interesting to see is, you know, they opened up the testing more broadly this weekend. And, um, I, I don't know that the numbers will necessarily hold with the greater number of testing that we've had done. So I will, will the health department be on our call on the twenty eighth to give us an update as to with all the additional testing, where and what our expectations should be? And we'll be coming in to the time that they've talked about the, the mayor opening, I mean, the governor opening parts of the state or how that will work. Would that, would it be opportu- would it be an opportunity for us to hear from the health department on the twenty eighth?
Yeah, yes. Uh, and you may recall from last Thursday's meeting, you all did request that they be on the agenda for the twenty eighth. So they will be there. How much they'll know as far as, uh, I mean, certainly they'll know test, test data for Sullivan County. How much they'll be aware of, of what the governor, uh, and, and may do in terms of, of the graduated rollout uh, across the state. I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how much of that information will be available. But certainly the test data, I would think from the first week, I think today was they, they, uh, they commenced the drive through testing and the parking lot of the health department, and that will run through May first. So by the twenty eighth, hopefully they've got a sampling of that test data back and, and can speak, uh, can speak more knowledgeably uh, based on, on those results.
Thank you. It would be interesting to know exactly what statistics they deem as those that are driving towards reopening. Additionally, uh, in talking with, uh, Dr. Tudor of the Bristol Tennessee Schools, we're all delighted that she is now sitting in that position. Uh, it would be interesting, I think, for her to give us an update on Vance and on the school system in general. I know that, uh, they are working with their budget, be sure that the middle school comes in on time, on budget as best as it can. And it would be great, that it would be great to, um, have an update from her about our school situation in general.
You know, I had asked for her to be included on these calls of getting an invitation. Is she still getting an invitation and just hasn't?
Yeah, yes, she is. And, and, and the way, way Annette and I left it is, is she's, obviously her time is, is tight. And if there was a, uh, an item that was on the agenda that she felt like she needed to speak to or be involved with, or if she had information to share with, um, with council, then she would be on the, on the, on the agenda.
Okay.
Or on, she would, she would be, have an invitation as a panelist.
Okay.
So, um, we haven't heard from Ballard in a while. Do y'all want to hear from Ballard on the twenty eighth for just update of where they are with their preparations and response? I know Greg, Greg Neal is willing to do that.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good idea.
Okay.
Might want to do, um, in looking at that, um, you know, that, that meeting starts at ten thirty. We're going to need to advertise for a call meeting uh, to, to handle the, the second reading on twenty dash six. Since we're going to advertise that anyway, we, we might want to me, move that meeting to nine o'clock. If we start a meeting at ten thirty and we have Greg, uh, and then we also.
We're going to be hungry.
Yeah, we are. If, if council has no objections, I'll set that meeting up as a call meeting to commence at nine o'clock, followed by a work session that will have reports, uh, that y'all just mentioned.
Yeah. And also, um, I think it, an update from the schools is, uh, would be well appreciated. But it also could be a future session if it looks like this one's full with our health department and co- a comprehensive plan, depending on how long that presentation is or, or whatever. So, um, or a brief update and then morely on their budget and Vance at a future.
I think a brief update, and I think it's really important to recognize that, that, um, while we're all on, um, stay at home, we have a lot of children out here in, um, different places that have real needs. And, um, you know, the school system is doing a tremendous job. I know the Community Resource Center is reaching out and trying to be in touch with the children and their families as much as they possibly can. And I think, um, it would just be good to, if, not, not a protracted conversation, but just an update would be great if we could. And we haven't really officially welcomed her in her new position. So it would be nice.
Yeah. And I agree, the school systems are doing awesome. Also, just overall, the, um, they're doing awesome with, uh, providing the meals and the other groups that traditionally provide, um, support and meals to a much smaller number have been able to step up and increase that. And so far, um, that seems to be meeting most of the obvious need at this point. So without having to add other efforts to that. So it's been great to have those existing services. So other comments from council or updates or anything?
Yeah, I just want to go back on the, go ahead, Chad.
Okay, sorry, Miller. Um, I was just going to add also to, we, you know, we've had several things out there kind of hanging and, uh, one of the things that, uh, i- i- if there's no updates and there's no any information, that's fine. But one of the things that I'm curious to know about is how, going on our worksite off Shelby Street there, um, uh, where the, um, uh, oh, help me out, Bristol, uh, Bristol Sporting Goods Place was.
One site.
See if there's any updates maybe next week on that. And, uh, also too, one of the things that I've had hanging out there is we've talked about regu- um, building regulations and the relaxation of a few of those. Um, we said in a couple of months, we were going to check things out. And, uh, if, um, Tim is going to be in attendance for anything else, it doesn't have to be next week. But has there been any information from the state level that the, the current regulations uh, that we had discussed are going to stay in place and, and carry out another year so that we can relax as everyone else has?
Okay. Okay, Emmanuel?
I just want to follow back upon the, um, uh, testing that Sullivan County is doing. You know, I think this data is going to be very important for all of us. I think it's going to give us, um, hopefully it's going to give us what we all expect, that, uh, we're a lot better off than what we fear. And, uh, I think that's going to be a very important measurement for us.
A quick question. Does anyone know, um, my understanding was we were going to be getting an update from the governor on the twenty eighth. Um, we had our, uh, tourism folks from, uh, the state mention possible updates during this week. Do we have an indication if the governor is going to be making, um, making any types of, um, um, uh, relaxation on our current situation, phase one, phase two, that kind of thing as the, uh, as the federal government started into. Does anybody have any information on that?
Counsel McKean has, uh, um, the, the call that I was on yesterday was certainly a, a subgroup of that or a subcommittee of that. Much, much, much broader group, uh, Commissioner Azell is, is coordinating that entire effort. But it, it is, uh, as I understand it, that, the task of that group to develop a reopening strategy. Uh, now they're, they're still, they're still baking that cake certainly. Uh, and, and I'm sure they're going to evaluate testing data and engage, uh, members of the business community across a broad spectrum uh, of interest there. But I haven't heard that it's going to happen on the twenty eighth. But, but the, the goal is to, as the governors, uh, as least as I understand it, as the governor's stay, stay at home order, uh, nears its completion, that, that there would be some, some strategy there to either begin reopening or, or, or there would be test data not to do that. But, um, but that's, that's the task of that group that Commissioner Azell, uh, referenced this morning as he left our meeting is to begin, uh, that strategy for reopening. The date and time is probably somewhere around the timeline that you indicated, but I haven't heard a hard date and time.
I think that our current, um, not stay at home, better at home, what do we call that? Stay at home, um, is, I, I think it is supposed to be updated on the twenty eighth. Now, that's the reason I mentioned the twenty eighth. Um, it's my feeling that we should follow along with what the state, uh, comes up with. And if that were, for instance, to happen through our meeting Monday, excuse me, on Tuesday, nine o'clock. Where, what, I guess I want to know is where do we go from here? Are we going to have to have a three day? If we're going to follow along with lines of what the state is doing, um, how, how is the best way for us to proceed?
I think our, we're following under our health departments. That's the, the real um, um, decree that we have. So if you're talking about how do we lift our state of emergency or whatever, I think we look to our health department and, um, and follow with what, what they recommend. And, you know, if, if at all possible, they're going to follow the governor. What just, I was going to update just a little bit, the, the things that I'm sure everybody's heard and that we heard again last week and for, as council, and then again on Friday, the, the meeting that Bill and I do with the other mayors in Sullivan County and the health department. The, uh, community testing and following up on contacts are critical to, to moving forward. Um, we're just starting that community testing and it's, um, which, and it's being done by Sullivan County is doing. And that's what's at Blountville starting, um, today. Um, and at Volunteer High School, it started, I think, on Saturday. That's the state health department through the Northeast Tennessee Health Department. Again, a little bit of difference. Um, and our health department is still continuing to do it by appointments, but the criteria to get it done has changed so that anybody can call to get an appointment to get a test done. But those tests are still taking four to seven days to get back. So that means if we start testing this week, it's going to be probably early next week that we start really getting some numbers. Um, so that's going to make, depending on, and this is happening across the state, it's not just us, um, with the community wide testing. So depending on what those numbers start showing, I think it's going to make a big difference. So until we see what, but how that starts turning out, I think it's, it's difficult. The other measurements that, um, oh, and you're supposed to see a two week downward trend is what is being said nationally. We've had pretty plateaued here. Um, also the ratio that is talked about with public health, it is, um, we started out with one to five and that has gone down significantly. And it's, uh, in Sullivan County, it's one point four or five. Um, and it really, no, excuse me, it's, that might be, um, statewide. In East Tennessee, we're at one point six and the ideal is to get it below one. So, um,
But Margaret, one point six, that out of the number tested?
That is out of, yes. So that's where we may see a difference or either direction. If we start testing and find out that the majority of people are not infected, that certainly operates in our favor. So.
And that was, that speaks to my point about, you know, the statistics. It's important to know what's, what specific statistics are up for consideration because it's not necessarily the number of cases that have been identified. It, it's, it's much more comprehensive. And so that point, if you take a hundred and fifty eight thousand people in Sullivan County, and we currently have forty five diagnosed with one death. Any death is a tragedy and we all agree on that. But if you run those numbers, then, you know, proportionately speaking, we're well below the one percent.
No, that's, well, in East Tennessee, it's one point six. That's Sullivan County lower than, say, County has been, et cetera. So, um, and actually the one point four or five might be us. Um, the, that may be Sullivan County. So we're still not, anyway. And what that below one says that the disease is in the process of being eradicated. So anyway, um, yes, it's not simple. It's complicated. And our public health officials, um, this is new for them to do this, but it is not new for them to have infectious disease and, um, and look at different, um, data, et cetera, following those. Also, just to follow up, um, uh, Gary Mays and I'm sure our Northeast Tennessee, um, health department have requested more staffing. Um, they've been able to keep up, but barely. And with more testing, trying to make more contacts, uh, following up with more contacts, et cetera, um, is very labor intensive. So they have asked for funding, which the state has received quite a bit of money from federal, um, presumably to do some of that. So also if we're talking to our legislators about, um, our electronic meetings, also to talk with them about funding for our health department, um, to help us stay on top of this. And it's going forward too, not just now, but we need our public health, we need our health department helping us to lead through this for how do we open back up? How do we keep from getting, uh, curve up for reinfection that's, we've seen various places? That's the last thing we want is to have to go backwards. Um, so anyway, we need, we need to keep a strong health department with. Anyway, okay, Vince, sorry.
No, I mean, I understand the fact, I think the health department has done, uh, a great job. But, I mean, my opinion is that we go and following the governor. And I think what Chad is asking is that where, what do we do if the governor comes out and says he is opening up the state? Our local health department maybe is not wanting to do that. Where do we go from there? What do, how do we? Do we all meet again? Do we need to vote as what we're going to do is, I mean, I guess Sullivan County will have to do the same thing. Do we hear, how, how is that? What do we need to do of preparing for that?
Vince, I, I think it, it may be premature to, to look at all of those things. Um, I, I understand your concern in that of Counsel McKean also. But there's additional testing that's being done that will, I think, provide a lot of data. A lot of information for decisions to be made in the next, in the next week or so. Um, I think the governor will provide guidance. I think our Department of Health will also provide guidance based on the data that is there. Um, as I understand it, from a statutory standpoint, regardless of what we do, the chief medical officer still has the ability to have a safe red home order. Again, they're going to follow the, uh, the, the, the data. And they, and they're going to certainly, certainly hear what's coming out of Nashville. Um, so that's, I mean, Margaret, did you have any other understanding different from that?
No. And also I think we have talked, uh, including last Friday, that we want to work together as a region, just like we did initially. Um, and that we want to continue doing that. So any, any changes we would, any, if we do anything differently um, from what the state is doing or, um, that we would want to work together as a region to do that. Just like we did, um, with the initial, that it wasn't just Sullivan County, it wasn't just Bristol. It was, um, it was all of, uh, It was, it was all of us, not, not all eight counties and cities, but the majority of where the population lies in our Northeast Tennessee. So I think that, that is also the, the hope and the intent of everyone who is talking. Also, there's interest in our working together as a region for the steps for reopening to kind of figure out how can we work together for that? And what can we do that helps strengthen, strengthen each and, each and all of us? So again, trying to work together as much as possible with the leadership in the region. So, and I do think until we start seeing numbers come back, I think hopefully it'll be clear. So i- if things really are much worse than what we imagine that they are, then hopefully it'll be clear enough that we'll all be ready to support going forward.
Yeah, I mean, I was just looking at, I mean, we're, today is the 20th. If the governor opens the first of May, and let's just say that we look at May 4th. I mean, we're two weeks away
Right.
Of opening back up. And so, I guess what is being, what needs to be done between, I mean, we've got two weeks.
So what I would encourage, I, I, I mean,
And that's strictly if the governor opens it back. Because I mean, I feel my, my feeling is of following what the governor is doing. So if the governor is opening back up in two weeks, then okay, what do we need to do to prepare to be ready to open back up in two weeks also, following the governor's orders?
I think
Harder that would be is to what his definition of opening up is, Ben.
Right.
He may be restricted.
Right, it is not going to be just go from one day to the next. It is going to be faith and you're starting to see that in some other, in other countries, in other states, that some businesses are being allowed to open first and face some. But what I would encourage as a community, because Bill's already told us as a city, they've got responsibility for internal things that, on how offices, offices are managed, et cetera. But the bigger picture for us as community leaders is what does it look like for our community? And I think we, right now, today, we encourage our community folks, our businesses, if they're already not looking at what are the things that they need to be talking, looking at, they need to be doing that now because it does, just like it moved quickly at the beginning, it could move not as quickly, but yeah, it's two weeks away. But during the beginning of this, it was a lifetime between one Monday to the next for what happened. So we've got a lot that's going to show up between now and the first part of May. But for businesses and for folks, I would, people need to be looking at how can they meet social distancing with their business? What are some of the things that they can continue doing? What are some of the things that they need to be thinking about? How, how are they going to be operating differently? Because that's going to be the expectation. I think we heard from the tourism folks that safety is the number one thing on people's minds. So just opening up doesn't mean you're going to get all your clients and business back. You've got to assure people that you're adhering to safety measures, et cetera, so that they'll be ready and feel good about coming back. So that needs to be happening right now with people.
Moving forward, we have our meeting on the 28th. And so it does sound like there's a cascade, you know, and has been throughout this whole process. So have we already advertised the meeting on the 28th?
No, he's going to re-advertise it.
Yeah, as, as indicated earlier, we're going to need to change it to a called, called business meeting. And, and then just change the date to nine o'clock, given, given the length of items on the agenda.
Okay, so I guess my question is, is with all of this, and there sounds like there is some real a lot of questions and with the health department. Do we have someone coming in to discuss the plan with us on the 28th? Or could we move the meeting on the 28th to the 27th and then meet on the 30th?
We've got somebody already scheduled for the comprehensive plan. I would suggest if people want, we're going to have a meeting that first Tuesday in May. I would think if y'all are concerned about what the governor announces and how that's going to affect us, that if we wanted to set another meeting for the 30th, that that would make the most sense. And at that point, have an update from our health department or, or that we can talk further with the implications. Because I, again, on the 28th, it probably, well, the order goes to the 30th. So as things, and last time, we didn't know till Monday before Tuesday. And there were several conversations going on and people did not know what was going to happen. And I think part of, and this, that may happen again, even if we've got task force and people planning until enough of that data comes back to say that, and we haven't been in a hotspot where like Nashville and Memphis and some other areas to some extent. So anyway, if people wanted to try to do a called meeting on the 30th, that might address.
I think that would be good. We can go ahead and advertise and then once we meet on the 28th, we can, we can reaffirm the, the desire to meet on the 30th. That's what it is. You know, I think there, there's still just a lot of statistical data and it's important to know how that data will be used. And we, we don't know any of that right now. And, and Margaret, Bill, since we're not meeting again this week, you know, it'll be important after Friday that the update that we have coming out of that meeting with the mayors will be very important. On a different note, just to be real quick, I had texted Mr. Sore yesterday. I had received a contact and they were real, they were real excited, real concerned. They said, oh, the Tennessee was to receive 2.3 billion from the CARES Act. So Mr. Sore, would you explain just very briefly that that 2.3 billion is going to be used for what and whom?
Well, there's, there, there's a lot of places that can be used that, with that. Certainly the Department of Health COVID-19 efforts can be used with that. But from a local government standpoint, that the, the initial funding through the CARE, through the CARE Act was for cities with a population of 500,000 and greater. I think many of you have probably received emails from Tennessee Municipal League indicating, and also the National League of Cities, indicating that there is a second round of CARE Act funding that's currently in Congress. And, and there are efforts there to make sure that smaller cities, cities the size of, of the Tri-Cities, for example, that, that, that they're, that they become a part of that funding scheme and, and, and all of that. But right now we're not. So, but DOH type funding, things of that nature. The mayor mentioned funding needs for Department of Health as far as, as contact tracing, epidemiologists, those type of things. It's my understanding they could be used in the initial funding. But for cities our size, cities the size of Kingsport, Johnson City, Bristol, Virginia, and others, we're not part of that initial tranche of, of funding.
From the federal government. We have from the state government though, Governor Lee has appropriated money for, for all municipalities. Our portion to the city is $623,000.
Yes, it is. And that, but that's totally different from what as a matter of fact, the 623,000, we've been looking at that now for a couple of weeks since that's been announced. And that will fund your capital program for the, for the coming year. We've, when we look at, at sales tax, and, and I mean, it's just, you know, we, we can, we can all speculate what sales tax is going to look like a year from now. But we, we all, we all feel like it's going to be pretty ugly for the balance of this fiscal year. And for the first part of next fiscal year. How ugly? We're still trying to get information from DOR as to their, as to their perspectives. And that probably, the conference call I was on yesterday afternoon, that was the universal discussion with TML was how do, we need additional forecasting in terms of sales tax, sales tax or just consumption in general, whether it's from a local option, sales tax or from state shared sales tax, ABC taxes and so forth. It accounts for over 20% of our budget. So, and that's without doubt is going to be impacted. So as, as we look at, as we did during the progressionary years, what do you do to balance your budget? The first thing you do is begin to look at capital. And so what we have, have modeled or, or modeling is that 623,000 from the governors to fund our capital efforts for this fiscal year. And that's, that's, that's the proposed use for that.
Yeah, I'm sure much to discuss on that menu, but I, I want to reiterate, we have businesses right now that are hanging on by a thread. And I, I, I want to reiterate what Ben said about following along with the governor. And if, for instance, things do loosen up or, or we do say that we, we're starting into phase one of opening up the state of Tennessee on Tuesday, the 28th, for instance, it's imperative for us and our businesses to know that. And we act on that as quickly as we possibly can. Three days can cost a business a lot. And we're, we're talking about retail dollars coming into the, into the city itself. It's imperative that we move on that as quickly as possible. Also, you mentioned just a minute ago about the health department. And is that for sure the fact that if a municipal municipality were to say, we don't believe that's the right thing for our, for our municipal government to stay closed as it is right now for another two weeks, based off the direction of a, someone in our, in the health department, the Sullivan County Health Department? Does that mean we have to adhere to that? Or do, can we move forward? That may be a legal opinion, Danielle, but Bill for sure, or Margaret for sure, is that the case?
That's what, that's what we had been advised. But I, I would, I would say this, that, that your Department of Health officials are very, very sensitive to exactly those issues that you just brought forward. Certainly they want to evaluate the, the data that comes in. But they are very, very sensitive to exactly those issues that all of you have expressed. I think from a statutory standpoint, they do have that ability to do that. And if you recall that weekend that I spent calling each of you about the safer at home order, it, it wasn't that we had to put the order in place. It was that the county Department of Health really wanted this to be a regional effort across, across several counties. And they wanted the political leadership or desired the political leadership across Northeast Tennessee to support those efforts. As I understand it, they do have the unilateral ability to do that. But they're, they're, they don't take that decision lightly. They're going to look at, at the data. They're going to look at the governor's proposed rollout of, of reopening our state. They are very sensitive to the local economy. So I think, I think what I would suggest to all of you is give them an opportunity to evaluate the data. They are just now in the testing phase. And I think, I think we will know more on the 28th and we'll have them on the agenda for you to discuss with them. I think we'll know more on the 28th as to what the governor is doing on the 30th, what type of plan he, he wants to roll out. I think a lot of information that will, will be made available over the next week, both locally and both from Nashville.
Well, I guess with this order of where, as far as the electronic of if something does come out, the governor says, tells us what his plan is and what the dates are. I mean, we can meet within 24 hours.
Well.
Correct?
We have to advertise and if we still, even with electronic meetings, we still have to follow the, the laws. Danielle, remind us.
Um, if we're going to have a special called meeting, the charter requires that there be 24 hours notice published in the paper prior to that meeting. And so it's a stretch to say you could meet within 24 hours because you've got 48, 24, try to get that notice published and then another 24 hours.
But the long story short is that if it came to that, there would be a way, maybe not within the immediate 24 hours, but there would be a way for us to still convene and to meet.
Right, yeah. Also, everybody across the state is going to be in the same boat. Everybody's under emergency orders. Everybody's got the health department stuff. So they're going to be looking at the same thing, trying to figure out how they live theirs as well. So, and I'm sure, and everybody is just as anxious as we are. So I, I would then figure that it's going to be pushed a few days out that gives time for all those things. Also, I'll just say that Dr. May also talked about in that data that if we were to have a cluster breakout that happens in one of our institutions that have multiple cases, that you factor that into your, to your data and to your statistics. So you don't have to look at that as sending everything up high again because if, if they can control it and it's localized. So all that is taken into that, that formula part of the data and looking at analysis in doing this. And that's would be the same for having to step backwards if we reopened and saw cases going back up and needed to take some actions as well. All that's taken into consideration, so.
Well, as I've contended the whole way through, you know, the fiscal well-being is most certainly one. The emotional well-being, mental health is certainly another. And fiscal responsibility to everyone is the third piece of all of this. And I think we would all agree with that. You know, it's, there, there are a lot of tragedies here, but people absolutely losing their livelihood, that they have spent an entire lifetime building is most certainly a death of great value as well. And so we don't want to do any harm unnecessarily. And I think that's, we're all in agreement with that. So it'll be interesting to see how the statistics play out.
Right. Okay, anybody have anything else?
Mayor, I've got a email while we were meeting from Coach Wade, the Athletic Director of Tennessee High. They're doing a lights on tribute for class 2020 tonight at 8:20 PM. They'll be turning on the lights at the Stone Castle, Todd Houston Field, Rotary Field and out of Stone. And they'll, for 20 minutes.
Okay, that's at 8:20 tonight?
8:20 to 8:40.
Okay. And I assume are they asking us all to turn on our driveway lights or anything? Or it's just
It was just those facilities that they use. Their coaches will be going to each facility and turn the lights on. So I just wanted you to know what was going on.
That's great. Thank you for sharing. That was great timing. All right. If nobody has anything else, then we will call this meeting adjourned after almost three hours. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Okay, thanks. See you later.
Bye bye.